President.
Councilmember Soria. Council Vice President Capriolio. President Arias.
President. All right, City Attorney, you have the floor.
Hello, Doug Sloan, City Attorney, here to talk about our revised budget. We are not suggesting any revisions at this time, but to recap, our office, including code enforcement, has 133 authorized positions. That's an increase of four over last year, and the difference is to account for four people we hired to do abatement in houses versus contracting out. That saves probably about $100,000 a year doing that, and you get better responsiveness in the process. We are in the process of filling all of our positions. A year ago, when we were transferred code, we held 10 positions vacant because of budget uncertainty. When code was divided, we weren't quite sure where we would be with our budget. That was all resolved about December or January, then we started filling positions, and then COVID hit. When COVID hit, we froze, other than filling the abatement positions. But right now, we are in progress to fill all of our positions. Next slide. This is a recap of where we are on our budget. Our base general fund is about just under 18 million. There was a council motion with carryover to add 1.5 million on June 30th. The CARES reimbursement is approximately $800,000. So our total general fund is about 20.1. We have a tire grant of about $236,000 that helps with people going around picking up used tires and that sort of thing, for a total of 20.3 million. Next slide. This is a recap of some considerations for the office. First of all, this isn't on here, because I just got the numbers. But last year, we spent $2.1 million on outside counsel. That's down from an average of about 3.5 million over the last 10 years. And we spent only $124,000 on non-litigation outside counsel. So that means we're keeping a lot of work in-house, at about half the cost of sending it out. The next, we're looking at purchasing electric and hybrid vehicles. The purchase contract for 10 bolts is actually coming before you next week. That is being purchased with the one-time money that we have, basically from the CARES reimbursement and so forth. And then, I think in November, you'll be seeing a contract to purchase 10 Priuses also. And that would result in a long-term savings, as we had discussed before. There are some changes to our budget from last year, based on some pass-through costs for other departments, security, and those types of things. There were some increases pursuant to scheduled personnel costs. Like I said, we are filling all of our positions. We are looking at accounting for covering some new programs coming forward with liquor inspections, motel inspections, and then, of course, the virtual residential inspections. If there was anything in the office that you would think about maybe adding, I would suggest maybe on the abatement team. We have four people doing abatement, and we're discovering that that is the best tool if you want immediate results. We don't have to wait on owners to get out and do something. It frequently comes up where you can't find an owner, they're absent, may have died, and we're having trouble tracking anybody down. But the abatement team is available to almost immediately go out and solve problems. We have four people there now. If you were to add two, that would cost $100,000 to $150,000 a year, and that would just be more immediate results you could get. I did want to note that the office is extremely busy. We were busy before COVID hit, and now that's added all those layers of emergency issues with contracts and enforcement and all of that on top of what we are already doing. So, that's what I have. Thank you.
Any questions from the council on the city attorney's budget? Councilmember Chavez, you have the floor.
Doug, you sent the sheet of all the PRAs that have increased. What was the comparison from, I don't know, three years ago to now? Because I think that that would be very helpful to...
Right. About 10 years ago, we were responding to about 50 PRAs a year. Three years ago, I think we were around 1,000, 1,200, and then now we're up, for the last two years, running over 2,000 a year. We have four or five people that the better part of their job is to respond to PRAs. And a lot of that has been time-consuming in the last year with the changes in state law, that now we have to produce police body cam videos. And one incident can result in 100 hours of video, that all has to be reviewed. And we are just about completing that process, being caught up. It's been thousands of hours of video that we've had to review. So, the numbers of PRAs don't necessarily reflect all of that additional work, too. And I think they're doing a fantastic job. I don't recall hardly any complaints about being unresponsive on PRAs.
Do you have enough staff to fulfill those requests?
Yes, we do right now.
Okay.
Once we get caught up on the videos, that will really help also.
Okay, thank you.
Legal Counsel, are you requesting an increase in your budget?
No.
So there's no $10 million request for increase?
No, there's not.
City Staff, the council's direction on the CARES Act is that this department maintain their CARES Act reimbursement, which is tentatively estimated at $800,000, given all the CARES Act work that the code enforcement is doing. Is that in the budget? Is that remaining within your department?
My understanding is that is in our budget.
Can City Staff confirm and get back to us?
Council President?
Hey, Henry.
This is Henry Hiero. I can confirm that that $800,000 is in the City Attorney's Office's budget.
Henry, just to be clear, is it a supplant or a supplement?
It's in his appropriations.
It has been added to our general fund appropriations and is available to spend.
And we didn't remove general fund dollars from your department in order to...
That is correct, Council President.
Perfect.
No general fund dollars in the City Attorney's Office was reduced to offset that.
Great. Thank you, Henry.
You're welcome.
We miss you in person. It's gonna be a little tricky.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. Let me go to the public. Is there any...
President, I have a couple of questions.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. City Attorney, I just had a couple of questions related to some of the vacancies. I know that from the last report, it showed that a number of the anti-slam enforcement team folks were not filled. Is that still accurate, or what is the status?
Well, like, a year ago, we had about, when we took over code, we had about 10 positions unfilled. With the budget uncertainty, we kept, uncertainty, we kept those unfilled because we did not know where we would be on budget. That was resolved about January. We started filling positions, and then COVID hit. And so, we have stopped hiring since then. But now, understanding where we are on budget, we are proceeding to fill all of our positions as quickly as we can.
Okay. And so, we anticipate that all of these positions will be filled, do you feel, this fiscal year?
Definitely this fiscal year, probably this calendar year.
Okay. And then, I know that you mentioned with COVID-19, code had been extremely busy, and I know for a large portion of the last seven months, they've spent doing a lot of enforcement related to COVID. I know that there were some concerns, at least from my office, that there were some things related to code that weren't given as much of a priority, and I know, you know, COVID was top of the list. But I just want to give a sense where we're at. I know that the council at some point gave direction to make sure that we did have folks out in the, back in the neighborhoods addressing some of those concerns. In particular, I know that in my district, we had a few issues with trailers and folks that were parked in private property that shouldn't have been there, and so I know that it got resolved, so I'm grateful to the work that code did. I know that you guys have some remarkable people on staff, but just wanted to kind of hear from you, where we're at in terms of some of the more real code-related issues that the city experiences.
We are getting back to normal as quickly as we can. There are only a few people now dealing solely with COVID issues, and that's on a complaint-driven basis when they're out. They are assisting with delivering masks. We are firing up virtual inspections, so we can do residential inspections without having to be on-site. But we still do have a number of people that are on home quarantine or work from home. And of course, you can't do inspections working from home, so there are some limitations there. But we are trying to get back to normal as quickly as we can.
Okay. Thank you on that. And then, I think those are all my questions for now.
Thank you. If there are any other questions, then I'll go to the public. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the City Attorney's proposed budget? Which does not include any increase for this upcoming year? No? We'll now go to the City Clerk's budget. City Clerk, you have the floor.
Good morning. I'm Yvonne Spence, City Clerk. And not a lot has changed since our meeting in June. In the meeting in June, we did get some projects approved, which include our agenda management system, which is on Thursday's Agenda for Approval, microfilming our historic records, and replacing our doors to enter into the clerk's office to make them ADA compliant. I do want to talk about staffing, because we only have six positions, and we just had one of our historical employees retire. Cindy Brewer was here for 31 years, and she spent those 31 years in the City Clerk's office. So we are recruiting for that position, and we'll have that filled as soon as we can. Next, I just wanted to mention a couple of things that, if you could consider approving, as the budget allows. We have, we are using Laserfish as our document imaging system. There's a public portal where the citizens can pull documents up themselves. And we need some assistance from our third-party vendor ECS to make some of our processes a little bit more streamlined in regards to the data entry. Perhaps they can show us how we can pull the information from our documents to give that information. And then also, the records management consultant. Going over the history of the city of Fresno, we noticed that many, many times, a records management program was getting started, but it never finished. This is a way to get someone with a records management experience to dedicate their time to create a plan for the city, a citywide records management program, and all our staff would need to do is implement it. But it takes a lot of time to figure all of that out, and we just don't have the staff to do that.
Yvonne?
Yes.
How many years have you been asking for this? Because I remember, I think at least five, at least five years. I am gonna make a motion, because it is a one-time cost, and there seems to be some dollars that are not appropriate from the City Attorney's Office that we could potentially use if we have to identify a source of funding. But I know that, at least since I got on this council, you've been diligent about asking, so that we improve, and we've made significant improvements when it comes to accessing records. And if we want to continue to increase transparency for our public, I think that this is a good move. And given that it's a one-time cost, I'd like to make a motion for that.
I'll second it with one caveat, that we meet with the City Attorney and understand if we move money, the impact it's gonna have on his budget.
It's, yeah, we can double-check, but it's unappropriated dollars, so...
If Counsel, if you allow me, Henry, if I recall correctly, the records management was one of those motions that was approved by the council, contingent on money being available? Is that now not already baked into the budget? Or did you guys, is that one of the motions that you didn't include in the overall, your revised proposed budget?
Council President, you'll have to bear with me. I'm trying to get my video up, and it's not allowing me to show up. I hope you can hear me, though.
Yeah, we can hear you perfectly, Henry.
But the answer is, there was not an additional $60,000 added to the City Clerk's revised budget at this time.
Okay, so the motion stands. Let's move on.
Okay.
Thank you, Henry.
That's pretty much all I have, unless you have any questions. I'd be happy to answer.
Is this the primary need that you have in your office? To do your work in terms of the staffing? I know that you mentioned you have one vacancy, which you guys are gonna work on trying to fill, which I know that is gonna be some big shoes to fill, because Cindy was around, as you mentioned, a long time, so she knew a lot of the history.
Exactly.
But you guys think you guys have enough resources to be able to have the appropriate staffing, given now that new vacancy?
Yes, when we fill that vacancy, we will be fully staffed, and we can survive with the six people that we have. We've got cross-trained staff, and we can manage.
Okay. The other thing before you leave, I was interested in actually amending a motion that I made yesterday, and I wanted to, or maybe just replace it. I want a motion to move the Central Printing Division staff and the budget from Finance Department to the City Clerk Department. I've been in conversations with our City Clerk, our City Attorney, in terms of the volume of work and what we utilize. And for us, it's a priority that that department or that division is fully staffed. They're very, very valuable to the city, to the clerk. And I think that having them there would ensure that it's appropriately staffed, and that it has the resources, and that we can maximize the equipment that we already have here in the city of Fresno. So I'm gonna...
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any other comments and questions for the clerk? Seeing none, I'm gonna go to the public. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the council?
Council President?
Uh, Councilmember?
Quick question. Yvonne, with regards to the system that we have up here, it seems that it's not as flexible. I know that Council President was having trouble kind of reassigning where people sit. Is that just because we have an old system, or what will be the price tag for updating our system?
And you're talking the voting system?
Yeah, the voting system, councilmembers punching up, and the Council President being able to see?
Yes, the new Agenda Management System that we're putting on the Agenda for Thursday includes electronic voting, as well as a lot of other features that you may not have now.
And when do you anticipate that will be in place?
We'll prove it on Thursday, and we'll get started.
So Friday? All right, thank you. That's the only question I have.
City Clerk to the Councilmember Chavez's question, I know he's gonna be the incoming president, and it's not good enough that we gave him lights back, but now he wants upgraded dais and, you know, more techie toys? Bells and whistles.
I'm gonna need a bigger chair, too, and I'm gonna need a microphone that says blah, blah, blah.
Is there any other, I know some of the electrical was upgraded in these chambers when we improved the lights. Is there any additional equipment you need in the actual dais that needs to be addressed? And I won't put you on the spot, but can you get with IT and facilities and come back in this, during this budget deliberations, and give us a number? Because I want to make sure that I turn over to the council, incoming president, all the bells and whistles that he wants, so that he can unmute and unmute us as a dictator has a right to do.
I'll do that.
That's what I'm looking for, the mute button.
Thank you, City Clerk.
Council President?
Henry?
This is Henry Hiero. If I could make a point of clarification, I thought I heard Councilmember Soria that her new motion is a replacement of an existing. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct. It is a replacement of my previous motion to appropriately staff, so we're just gonna move the entire division under the City Clerk's department.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, who seconded the current motion?
Councilmember Butterfield.
Thank you.
Thank you. And City Clerk, just so you know, I know we've, I've asked IT if there's anything else that the city needs to keep on having these virtual participation available during council meetings. Please, you know, spend some time with them to make sure that everything that we need is all incorporated into one proposal, because it might be a while before we have additional resources, so I don't want to make you wait a few more years for improvements. I think we're, is there any member of the public wishing to speak to the City Clerk's budget? I think I have Lisa Flores. Lisa Flores, you'll be unmuted.
First off, I really love the idea that the motion that Ismaelda made about moving pruning over to the clerk's office, that is brilliant, and thank you, Gary, for seconding it. The one question I do have is, will the Zoom meeting, will the Zoom access to the City Council continue? Because one of my problems when I go to City Hall is, it's too far for me to walk until I get knee replacements, and I may never get knee replacements. And also, too, when I come to the City Council, you know, I have to sit because I can't stand for very long because of my knees. And all your guys' chairs out there are on casters, and my biggest fear is falling out of a chair with casters on it. And I kind of wonder, are you guys ever gonna get just a simple chair with legs that doesn't roll? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll follow up, give you some answers to those questions. All right, that concludes the public comment for the City Clerk's budget. Now we'll proceed with the infamous and most valuable and important department, which is the Parks and Recreational Department. I know there hasn't been a lot of recreation taking place during the pandemic, and our parks do look a little greener, since they're not really being utilized. But it's one of the most important amenities that our city has to offer and our residents care about, so... Director, you have the floor.
And we agree. TJ Miller, Director of Parks and Recreation. And I, the slides that we have before you, there's three. The first I want to go through is just what we do in parks, and I'll just briefly go through. We do parks maintenance, general repair, grounds and facilities for 110 properties. We have over 1,200 acres, 82 parks. Our community recreation services provide recreation and community for our entire community, senior, youth, families. We have a full lineup typically in non-COVID years of sports. Softball, we have soccer leagues, we have our Biddy Youth Program. We also do therapeutic recreation out at Inspiration Park. We have a special events division that runs under admin, that is also in a modified state due to COVID. But this is supporting the special events throughout the entire city, whether it be on Fulton Street or at one of our parks, and we help those folks get through that. We have staffing, we have partnerships with Fresno Unified, both with Aquatics, the Weekend Green Space, and also the Spark Program. And then, as of June, we also now take care of graffiti citywide. So moving on to the next slide, this is our operating and capital budget for our general fund. This represents our entire department in terms of our general fund costs, everything from maintenance, community services, and graffiti. And there's the reflection in the increase on our operating general fund includes the motions that were made in June, as well as our newly-acquired graffiti team. The next slide is our non-general fund. This is gonna come from our contracted services, UGM, it's both our operations and our projects. The next slide is new. You did not see this one in June, and this, I wanted to just give a quick summary and lead into a vacancy discussion. So we have 88 permanent authorized positions in parks. And you heard before, we have 82 parks, so that's barely one person per park, even if we restructured everything and had each person in charge of a park. 12 of those positions include graffiti. We're currently at a 10% vacancy. And going through the chart, I just wanted to let you...
Director?
Yes.
Can you explain, what do you mean by graffiti?
The graffiti abatement team moved from the Police Department to parks. So on the chart, I just did this quick illustration, just to let you know what's changed since June. Because when I presented in June, the majority of our recreation and community services, and quite a bit of our administration, were doing disinfecting in our parks. We were proud to keep our parks open through the entire pandemic. At the time I presented last, our parking lots at the parks were not yet open, but they did open that week that I was presenting. And now, it took us a while to get everything in order and situated with SP Plus, and we were able to open in line with the zoo being open at Roding. And that also developed a revenue stream for us that we hadn't had since the pandemic. So through, as taking you through the months in March, this is where the shift came. I took it from post-COVID happening. The admin, and if you focus on admin and recreation and community services, they were doing disinfecting, and some of the programs started to be impacted in the mid-March. Through April and August, our recreation and community service, our full team, were in the disinfecting mode. They took on those tasks of keeping those parks safe and clean for a COVID environment for our community. In September and October, we started transitioning, as we are very proud to be presenting our programming again, starting next month. We have virtual programs. We've already started, did the registration, sorry, for Biddy Soccer, and that's gonna be in-person, modified. We've followed every guideline that we could find, even though there might not have been one specifically designed for our program. We looked to find one that matched in the school industry. So we kind of had to re-engineer how we were doing things, and instead of taking our old programs and making them work, we took the guidance and created new programs. So those will all be starting in November. One of the challenges is that we wanted to continue to maintain to keep our parks safe and clean. So we have to replace all of our staff that were in the field doing those tasks with the COVID response team temporaries through the CARES Act. So that's what's been going on the past two months, is that transition of staff and getting our permanent staff back to the jobs that they were hired to do. If I can transition for, into our vacancies, I mentioned we have a 10% vacancy rate at the moment. We have, we have 10 vacant positions.
TJ, before you go on to the vacant positions, what kind of activities are you guys gonna be doing that are following the CDC guidelines at the parks?
We have virtual model, and then we have cohort model for our after-school programming. So we've taken the cohort guidance that schools are allowed to bring at-risk youth back into, and we're using that, modeling it after that for our after-school program. So there will be limited, we're doing it outside, registration, trying to make it work, and we'll adjust it as we go.
And at these community centers, is there access to Wi-Fi? I know that I've heard from a lot of neighborhoods that the Wi-Fi is very spotty. Even the Wi-Fi hotspots that were provided by the district are still not the greatest. And so, in a lot of our neighborhoods, our kids have struggled to really get the quality online virtual learning that they needed. Would this be an opportunity for them to come and use our facilities to access?
I think if we were able to address it with a little more robust efforts, because we, too, have struggled with the same access levels. Our virtual program, we had really targeted to have, starting in October, and we're struggling with some of the, even the hotspots and the MiFi's, operating enough to sustain a Zoom program.
Is that what we use at the community centers? Like, we don't have an actual, you know, kind of like what we have here at City Hall?
Correct. Not all centers have the full network fiber.
How can we make sure that we have that available? What would be the cost to ensure that all our community centers? It seems like, given COVID, it would be appropriate and an appropriate CARES expenditure to equip our community centers to have the capability, so that folks could use, given the fact that now virtual is kind of the thing?
I don't have those numbers in front of me of what each of those centers would cost, but we can get that, and I'll work with Brian to see what other obstacles there may be. There may be fiber connectivity that's, you know, beyond just our ISD going out to that site. So I'll work with Brian.
Yeah, I think that that would be great. I'm interested in figuring that out. I know that other communities have gone creative about providing learning opportunities for their, for the kids, given the fact that, one, you know, parents are at work. Two, the infrastructure in some of these neighborhoods is worse, and it would cost a lot more money than if we did it through our community centers.
Yes, we do, we did find a way to be able to start offering virtual program. It just isn't as in the live capacity that we were hoping. We're not giving up on that, that plan, but we wanted to get a stopgap in there, and that would be the pre-filmed activities, where we're passing out a project, you know, partnering with Fresno Unified to pick up your lunch, pick up your project for after-school, log in here, and there's the instructions. So we're making our way towards that, and we'll keep you posted as we start.
Could we get that information by the time, before we take a final vote on the parks? On the, in terms of the internet connectivity?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, because I believe we have already done some of that.
At least, at minimum, obviously, I would love it to be citywide. I don't know how my other colleagues feel, but I know that I represent some neighborhoods that are very challenging, that don't have the infrastructure, where I would like to see them have the opportunity to access Wi-Fi in the park or in the community center.
Thank you. And if you have any specific questions on our vacancies, or if you'd like me to go through them... And if you have any specific questions on our vacancies, or if you'd like me to go through them, we have three vacancies in our parks. Maintenance, we have a property maintenance worker, a maintenance carpenter, too, and an irrigation specialist. All of those are more recent vacancies. The, the property maintenance worker, I believe we are converting to a irrigation specialist because we currently only have five irrigation specialists. And with a park system our size, we really do need to, to beef up that support team. In terms of our community recreation services, some of the vacancies are older than we'd like. We have no desire to keep the positions vacant, but we were in the process of restructuring and reorganizing community services and recreation with a little different model. And anytime you go through a reorganization, you have situations where you may not have the correct job classification, or how are we going to restructure this? And so we, we did have some position conversions in there as well as change, reclassifying all of our recreation supervisor ones to recreation supervisor twos.
TJ, first I want to say thank you for your dual roles that you've been playing since the pandemic started. For the council who may not be aware, the public, you've also been our emergency response coordinator for the city. So everything from Plexiglas coming up in these chambers and across every facility, and every response, you have been at the head of the table, I've been in your guys' war room. In addition to that, you're still trying to, you know, lead the Parks Department. I think you're only human, and I think as a result, not only of you being split, you know, two different ways into demanding positions, but as, as you noted, most of our parks, if not all our park staff got repurposed to do COVID prevention, which is extremely important. But as a result, our parks have only gone backwards in, in the conditions and facilities. So I wanted to ask you a couple of questions related to, as we exit the pandemic, what reassurances are we going to have that we're going to get to a point where the community is not demanding that we pass a citywide sales tax? Because the parks continue not to meet the expectations of the public. Do you currently, in terms of positions and the restructuring, when do you plan to complete the restructuring of your new model?
We were in the middle of it right, right as the pandemic started. So we kind of pushed pause, but that's just only one portion of it. And I didn't have an opportunity to elaborate that while those limited amount of permanent positions, we are also, we also operate with at any given time 200 to 300 temporary employees. So those are not permanently assigned positions. The pandemic did impact that, it affected that as they're generally funded, they're paid through general funds or through CDBG. And we weren't getting CDBG funding, so it wasn't prudent, the job they were hired to, to do senior programming paid through CDBG. That's not prudent to keep that individual on unless we were going to repurpose them, as you mentioned. So in terms of our reorg, we, we were in kind of midstream, starting to fill those positions. I think once we can fill our supervisor positions, we'll be able to go next step. And to speak to the ultimate goal of that reorg and restructure is to be able to have our community centers more accessible, more hours of the day, more days of the week. Prior to, and it's, it does take funding because we were funded to have those centers operated during the operating hour, the program hours of in the morning for seniors, in the afternoons for after-school children. We, we need to expand that and have those community centers open for the community seven days a week, whether it be nine to six, nine to seven. So I would say, to answer your question, it would be a matter of when our funding could staff those positions.
Do you currently have a grant writer position vacant and open in your department?
I do not. We have a grant writer, well, it's not a grant writer position. It's a senior management analyst, and she takes care of all of our grants, and she manages that component. The pivotal position that we do have vacant that is in immediate need to fill is our projects administrator. We have over 60 projects currently in the queue at some form. And we don't have that most important position that is actually overseeing and ensuring that all the various funding-
Is that like a construction management position?
It is not. It is the position that is overseeing the project managers, overseeing our contractors. That's the position that will identify where there's an issue before it becomes a huge problem, where I can, you know, get in-
When do you anticipate filling that position?
We actually had a job offer in, in February. The individual declined before we could even get that back out on recruit, for recruitment. The pandemic hit.
Assistant City Manager?
Those positions have been difficult to fill or find people for across the board within the city. Any, anytime we get into capital development specialists, project managers, project administrators, which is a higher level, difficult to find those people and attract them to work here. We had one in parks for a period of time, and we saw very positive effects with him here. Unfortunately, he left the city within a year, I believe.
What's your typical pay range for that position?
I don't have the exact amount, but I do know that it is over $100,000 a year for that position. And the, the, just to illustrate the importance of that. So I mentioned we have over 60 projects in the queue at some point that that person's whole job is to manage all of those intricacies of all of those projects, identify problems before they occur so that we can address them, so that I can provide you guys updates in real time. We're going to struggle with this. We see it. This is what we need, or this is what we're doing to fix it. But we haven't had that individual. So the team is doing the best they can, dividing up and trying to, to bounce through and check on those projects, but it is a, a missing position.
And it's, it's a specialized skill set. It's hard to get those people that have that skill set. The other part I would add, having a consultant do that work is somewhat helpful, but my experience is they don't have the ownership in the projects. And, and, and so it's not as effective as having that personal person internally.
Correct. And if I might just add that if we, even if you had a consultant for each different project, we're still in the same boat. We need one person collectively in that department that is responsible for overseeing and keeping everything going, and they know the dynamics and the other things that are happening in the department.
Director, by how much is your budget increasing in this proposal?
I, let's see, our increase reflects the graffiti team being added as well as the motions that were presented in June. I believe it's an increase of $2 million. And I apologize, I don't have that right.
So that's not a net increase because we're just adding, we're, we reassign essentially a set of employees to you, right?
Twelve.
What's the net increase of your budget out, when you separate the people that we just gave you more responsibility for?
It would just be the June motions.
Can you hear me? Henry?
Yes, I can hear you.
Do you have that number, Henry?
Yes. So Council President?
So Henry, I'm specifically asking, from June until now, how much has the Parks Budget increased without accounting for the additional people that were added to that department?
Okay, if you'll bear with me then. So right now in the revised budget for the general fund, it's a total increase of about $2.5 million. Within that, there is a million-two, in essence, that has been the graffiti transfer. So we're looking at what, about a million? Million-three, excluding the graffiti transfer.
And that million-three was mostly, if not all, council motions?
Correct.
So eliminating the council motions for, how much was it increased without the council motions? Because the council motions were approved in June. So how much has this budget grown in the last six months as proposed?
Council President, I'd have to go back and tally those motions.
No, okay.
Is it fair, Henry, to say that it was only increased for the cost of living increase in the MOUs and the anticipated minimum wage increase? Because there wasn't anything I'm aware of that was added to this budget.
And that is, that is correct. As Director Miller states, they did not receive, for example, any new positions. They did receive an increase for the MOU wage increases as well as minimum wage increases set by the state. So they did not get anything in addition to that.
Thank you, Henry. Here, here's what I'm trying to wrestle with. We just had a robust conversation about public safety yesterday. And their budget increased by $13 million in the last six months alone, as proposed by staff. Some of it is wage increases that we've agreed to. Others, it's a whole lot of additional funds. The council made motions to add additional police officers, therefore adding additional resources to the police department budget. We added millions of dollars of additional resources to the fire department, you know, yesterday as well. And we essentially have flatlined the Parks Department. When we know that there is nothing for kids to do, everybody's home-stuck, they're under a lot of stress at home. Shootings are at a record high. We just confirmed yesterday that the police department cannot control all the variables that have led to this significant increase in crime, where we're seeing shootings every single night, multiple shootings a night. And the budget, which I'm told your checkbook represents your values, when it comes to kids, we've made it zero additional investment. Zero. After we've known that we've cut all services for all kids in the city because of the pandemic, which is going to continue for the foreseeable future. I'm, I'm waiting for my council colleagues to make motions that reflect that kids and green spaces are equally as valuable as police cars and our officers and firefighters are. And, you know, I'm quite frankly shocked that the administration has not proposed any additional dollars for parks, given the fact that we know what our kids are going through. So I'm going to take some time to figure out what motions we make to increase parks because it's just unacceptable. It is completely unacceptable that the folks in our city that are designed to serve our kids and our youth got zero additional dollars while we're tripping over each other to give everybody else millions of more dollars. So Council, I would just ask all of us, I know we all, we all have parks, projects that, you know, we're working on in our respective districts. We're all trying to replace playgrounds. We're all trying to, you know, make improvements, which is all important. But we just heard from our director that the most important position in her department that makes sure that all those projects get completed has been vacant and may continue to be vacant. So I'm, I'm going to ask that, that, that the council consider increasing the Parks Department's budget? Because personally, I, I don't want to just do it swiftly and be irresponsible and give people a false sense of expectation that we're going to give you a bunch of money when we know that we have competing interests, but I-
Council President?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to interject, and, you know, I agree with the comments that you've made. For the last six years, I've been harping on this issue. I still remember back in 2015, I had a press conference, a big press conference. This was before the whole Measure P issue was raised because I believe that this council, not just this current council, but the previous council, needed to do more, including the administration, to invest in kids, families, seniors, which still to this day, we, we haven't done enough. And so I understand your frustration. I've been living this frustration for the last five years. What, what troubles me is that even if we throw more money at the, at the, at the fact that we haven't invested or, or put more money to invest, that we don't have the capacity to implement. Because every time there is dollars put out there, it takes forever for these projects to get implemented. You know, I, I moved and was able to get monies for an internship program. That internship program hasn't really been taken serious. It's, we've been using some of the funds, but there has been no person that has taken responsibility from either parks or the city staff to make sure that we develop a robust, robust jobs program when this council and even the mayor has touted jobs about being critical. Yet this program hasn't been taken serious enough, even though we've been given $200,000 in matching funds from the Fresno Workforce Investment Board, even though PG&E has also put some skin in the game because they do believe in investing in young people. We have failed them. And this budget, again, reminds me of the failure of this city to invest in families, to invest in children, to really look at a comprehensive plan when it comes to public safety. Because parks is part of that equation. You know, we need to give alternatives to our families. We need to get alternatives to our seniors. And we haven't done enough. I, I'm extremely frustrated when it comes to our Parks Department. I know that we have some phenomenal recreational staff, people on the ground that in our community centers, they do as much as they can for our kids and for our families, but we're still not doing enough in terms of providing you guys with enough resources to expand the services that we have. I've been working on two of my parks. One, Quigley, which is still number one of our Parks Master Plan. We failed to get Prop 68 dollars to come down because we weren't competitive enough. And then I'm working on the Melbourne and Dakota Park, which was a park that was promised by this city over 30 years ago. And the vacant land continues to sit there and be an eyesore. And no one, I, I've been trying to, you know, over the last five years, get these projects done, but it's been such, such a battle. I do want to thank, you know, the staff that has been working with me more recently, Christina and our consultants, to try to get that design. I had to put out of my own district money to just do a design. Because again, as a Parks Department, as an administration, we haven't prioritized that. We haven't made it a priority. So I'm hopeful that this year, we are going to work hard to get some of these Prop 68 dollars. We got to figure out how we get a better grant writer, how, how we write these grants that are going to be able to be competitive so that we're drawing down dollars. We are one of the poorest in park space, and, and that's evident. If you go to any neighborhood in South Fresno, and we still can't compete for the dollars that this community deserves. So we got, we got to figure that something out on that. On a couple of other motions that I want to ask about. Henry, this council over the last couple of years has set aside funding for the senior center. That's separate and apart from the multi-general, multi-gen center that Councilmember Capriolo has been driving in his district. And I know that during kind of the pandemic, before we got the CARES dollars, we made a motion to use part of those dollars for the business grant. But once we got the federal CARES dollars, we said that we would replace it and make sure that those dollars were there so that we could figure out what we're going to do when it comes to developing a senior center in our city. Are those dollars still in this budget? Were, were they made whole?
They would have been made whole, Councilmember Soria. For any appropriations that were established and not spent, those would be carried over into the new budget.
I only see $600,000, though, per, per Page B94. I just wanted to make sure that it was the million that this council, I believe, had set in a previous budget and had been carried over.
Allow me to go back and, and verify that for you, Councilmember.
Okay. And then on the other, couple other issues that I wanted to bring up. I just mentioned there was a million dollars for a citywide senior center, which our seniors have probably, over the last three budget cycles, sat here and filled the room. And we still haven't done, done anything for them. We don't even have a plan, which is kind of sad and embarrassing that we haven't prioritized our senior community. I have been working very diligently in my district to bring a neighborhood senior center. And that's going to be opened up this spring when the multifamily, multifamily development project is ribbon-cut in about March or April. The developers have given the city about 1,900 square feet for a neighborhood dedicated senior center where Fresno City College is willing to partner with us. But I need the park staff. I need our staff to step up and figure out how we're going to staff it and how we're going to- and how we're going to furnish it. This is a donated space for the life of the project so that we can have a senior center there. So I'd like to make a motion to be able to, for this fiscal year, the remainder of the fiscal year, add a hundred and fifty thousand to do the furnishing of this neighborhood senior center and also be able to hopefully have some staffing that would help coordinate whatever programming that we do in conjunction with Fresno City College. So that would be my motion for that.
I'll second you on that, Councilmember Soria.
At the moment, in terms of, I would like to figure out what other, how else we could make investments that are going to be smart investments and we don't just put monies and then you're unable to deliver because you don't have the capacity. We need to figure out how we build the capacity in the parks department because it's the same story I've been hearing for the last five years since I've been here. We need to make the same type of investments as we're making to some of our other departments that are critical for the quality of life of our residents.
Councilwoman, if I may just interrupt you. I know when it comes to parks, we all have projects and we'll nickel and dime all these projects, which are important to us and important. But I would ask that we go bigger, and I just want to make a motion to increase the parks budget by five million dollars.
Second your motion, Council President.
I'll second that.
And we will work through how we find the money. But if we can find thirty million dollars for the police department in six months, I think we can find five million dollars for the parks department.
Mr. President, can you identify the money right now? I love the idea of increasing the parks budget, but our parks are closed, we're in a pandemic, and what we're having is a three hundred percent increase in shootings. We didn't add one more police officer, not one, but we have a three hundred percent increase in shootings, and we know that we're statistically behind.
If I may, whenever we make motions to increase any department, we're never asked to find the money. We make the motions, and if there's support, then staff and the council will figure out how much of it's available and where. And I do hear you, and that's why this council and I have voted to increase the police budget twice already. So I recognize the need to provide more public safety, but I also recognize the need to provide more prevention services for our kids so they're not out in the street being recruited to be in gangs and they're not getting shot during drive-bys when they're innocent bystanders. So I'm willing to work with the council and the administration to figure out the best funding sources for that money. But I want to be clear that, you know, fifty thousand here, twenty thousand there, a hundred thousand there, it's just not getting us where we need to be as a city. And although we're in the pandemic, our community centers are closed, our parks are still open. And we're asking people to go to the parks because it's the only place that they can socially distance. We're asking folks to have a social distant barbecue at the park where although we're still being cautious with, you know, basketball courts and physical activities, parks are still being used every single day. I was just, this weekend, I went to Woodward Park and my colleague D six district to do a bike ride around the trail. And I've never seen that many people in a park. The weather was perfect, the air was clean for the first time in a long time, and everybody was packing Woodward Park and enjoying it, which is what we want. And I know that that's going to have an impact on the grass, on the irrigation, on restrooms, and I don't want us to just allow the parks to deteriorate because our public is actually using that asset. And so I'm open to how we get to the five million, you know, where we find it from. But I think we just have to make an investment now.
Councilman Raddius, I've been waiting very patiently for a while. TJ, the budget that you presented, does it include the four million dollars that we included for parks improvements through the CARES dollars, or is that a separate pot of money?
I believe it was added into the appropriations, so we get reimbursed for that response.
So is that part of the total that you presented today, or is that a separate pot of money in addition to that?
Henry will have to confirm, but I believe that it's part of what I have presented. There's not a separate budget or line item.
Okay. And I just want to make sure that, you know, the public understands this because I think it gets a little confusing sometimes. We received over ninety million dollars as part of the CARES funding. And I want to make sure that, you know, our community understands that we appropriated money for rental assistance programs for our constituents. We appropriated money for our food distributions. We appropriated money for our small businesses to support them, obviously during the pandemic. And we've invested, we're getting ready to invest in the arts and culture here pretty soon. So I want to make sure that, you know, the community understands that those investments have been made. But I agree with my colleagues, it's not enough. I too was at Woodward Park this past weekend, and I mean, that's probably one of the most used parks in the city of Fresno. I think we all want those amenities closer to our homes, southeast definitely. And I know we're working on, you know, the project over at the Forty-nine Acres with Subceda and our organizations. But I want to make sure that we understand that these investments that we're making could have been subjective, and they could have been appropriated for other things, whether they would have been just exclusively for public safety, but we didn't. We actually, you know, took the lead and appropriated these funds for our community. We're getting ready to unveil two health clinics that will be coming to southwest and southeast Fresno. And I think it's important to keep that in mind too, that we are making investments in our community. But like my colleagues say, it's not enough to do that. And I'd like to get confirmation on that four million dollars that we appropriated for the parks. Jim, I'm watching you.
We'll confirm. It may have been placed in Public Works simply because they're doing the improvement work, but we'll double check.
Yeah, because I think that's important.
And that should have been above and beyond the parks' existing budget.
Correct. There's two different pots of money, so to say. In terms of the CARES, there's all of the infrastructure, the fixtures, the retrofit, and then also the staff reimbursement. So I'm fairly confident that the staffing component was built into our appropriations and we're reimbursed, so it's a wash. But the fixtures, those may be in the facilities budget.
And I'm supportive of the motion that was made by my colleagues with regards to the five million for parks. What I think we should do on a continual basis is we went through a very extensive master plan for our parks. And then it just, you know, I don't know if we're not revisiting it often, but I think we should revisit that and attach some funding to that as well on a yearly basis. Maybe this is the beginning of that process, right? Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, and actually, that is a good point because every time we approve a project, we need to be adding additional ongoing operational expenses and asking at that moment in time that we're approving to spend those millions of dollars on the program or project to have an accompany operation and maintenance and lifecycle replacement request as well.
Council President, if I can interrupt, I want to apologize for not being here earlier. I had court appearances that were scheduled over two months ago, and justice demanded my presence to protect the innocent.
Thank you, Council Vice President. For the record, we made a motion to take ten million from your district. But we might consider it back later.
If I had any, I'd share. It's pretty much spent.
Thank you. Thank you for your presence, Councilmember Bretterfield, and then we'll go to Assistance Manager Shaw.
Yes, so Council President, you made a motion to add five million dollars to the parks budget. Everybody is saying that we want to commit money to parks. Clearly, they need more money, there's no question. There's a whole thing in our community about tax increase for parks, which was a flawed tax measure, in my opinion. Others feel differently about it. You know, it comes down to priorities. You've said that. I agree with that. Our budgets are all about priorities. And I'm going to say something. I've been critical of this before. I mean, it is about priorities. We have money, that is general fund money, that is being allocated for other things that I think could be absolutely utilized for parks. So where is this money? Well, we've set aside, the council set aside, two million dollars of general fund money into something called a housing fund. Now, we get all kinds of funds from federal government, state government, to help with housing, millions of dollars, if that's correct. And I think I've asked Jennifer Clark this before in terms of how much money we get from housing funds. From the, maybe Jennifer, you can answer this question to be on the record, how much money we get from the feds and state to help provide housing. And yet we've set aside an additional two million dollars out of the general fund for something called a housing fund, which, well intentioned, but it comes down to priorities.
Good morning, Council Jennifer Clark Development, excuse me, Planning and Development Department. So we're actually about to go over and talk about the budget. So there is two million dollars appropriated in our Affordable Housing Fund that the city council put aside over the last two budget years. The purpose of those dollars is actually to acquire properties to ensure that affordable housing is actually constructed and built in our community. This would be able to be partnered with dollars that we do receive from the federal government and would allow us to reduce the average cost per unit. One of the concerns that the council has had is using the low-income housing trust fund dollars, or excuse me, low-income housing, yeah, trust fund dollars, which are through the state and the federal government, through the IRS, which actually causes our cost of housing per unit to be very, very high. And that's one of the things that's been a very big concern. This would allow us to push us down more in the market rate cost per unit. So instead of three hundred thousand dollars a unit, to be more in the hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit and then be able to provide and layer in those affordability covenants onto those properties.
You're talking about the two million dollars would help lower that cost, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, but what it is, is basically a subsidization of the general fund to lower these things, to call it affordable housing, which it is anything but affordable, and it's all taxpayer money. The fact is, the general fund dollars are being prioritized through this housing fund when they could be prioritized to providing parks, improvement in our parks. So that's fine. That's what this council's done. I don't think it's the appropriate way to use general fund dollars. How much money is the city of Fresno receiving from state and federal for housing dollars?
So additionally, the two million dollars will assist in the repayment to HUD for violations from dating back to two thousand and eight. But this year, the city will receive a little over thirty-five million dollars in a combination of homeless housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, federal home dollars and CBG. Now, not all of those are specifically for affordable housing. I mean, that's the challenge, right? So narrowing down and saying how much of those dollars will be used on actual development of affordable housing. Home program is the only one that does that, and that's about three million dollars. So combined, these can actually have a significant impact, which was one of the reasons that the city council had said we would like to develop this housing trust fund, this affordable housing fund, and start to grow it to start to build this base to actually increase the availability of housing. Again, it is a discretionary act of the city council. I'm not arguing that point at all. But the purpose for the fund was to bring down that cost per unit to ensure that we actually developed affordable housing instead of hoping that the private market or a nonprofit or somehow the housing authority got money from the state to do it.
And just because I've been kind of, have led the efforts to ensure that we build a housing trust fund. It's not just about the two million dollars. It's about positioning the city of Fresno to leverage millions of additional dollars because the state does require local municipalities to have skin in the game. If we do not have a housing trust fund where we can draw our own dollars, then we miss out on millions of other taxpayer money that gets to go to Los Angeles, that gets to go to San Francisco. And even though you may say, you know, well, our priorities, this is a priority in terms of when we're talking about homelessness. If we don't create more housing opportunities, especially those that are much more affordable in addition to regular, you know, market rate housing, which I support, we need to build these housing opportunities. Otherwise, our homeless numbers are going to continue to skyrocket. That's, you know, for example, eighty-eight units in my district, that would be eighty-eight families that could potentially not have a house and end up in the streets and then be on your freeway or on the corners where your residents don't want to see them.
Okay, well, the eighty-eight units in your apartment, that you're talking about, cost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a unit. It's hardly affordable, and that money could have been spent in a myriad of different ways to create housing for a hundred and eighty-eight people.
Let me correct the record because I don't agree with how expensive it costs us to build each unit. The fact of the matter is that the funding mechanisms that exist, we had to do it that way. Otherwise, we couldn't get the dollars. We would have never gone the dollars if we wouldn't have built the type of housing that we would have built. That's just the requirements that Sacramento and that the feds have when we draw those dollars down. So it's a fallacy that we are the ones having to build that kind of housing. We just wouldn't be able to build any housing if we didn't draw those dollars down, which require and have a greater threshold on standards when these housing opportunities are built.
Mr. President, can you get a chair for the parks director? She's going to be sitting there a while.
Yeah, councilmembers, can we get back to TJ and our budget, please?
Well, that's what I'm doing. I mean, of course, councilmember Soria wanted to address those concerns, that's fine. But again, you know, the motion is about five million dollars, and where are we going to get the five million dollars? The two million dollars is general fund dollars that, in my opinion, should not be used for a housing fund when we're getting millions of dollars. And did we just not get awarded some tens, ten million dollars or something from the governor for the Home Key project?
For homeless transitional funds.
Okay. How much money was that?
And that is actually not in my department, so I don't know the exact.
But it was the city manager or parks, do you know how much it was? As I recall, it was about thirteen to eighteen million dollars or something? Anybody know?
Yeah, let me get back to you in a second. I want to confirm before I say, state something that's inaccurate.
Okay, the point being is that we are getting assistance from the state and from the federal government to provide housing. And when you're using general fund dollars, which only can be used in this instance, while it's noble, while I understand it, it comes down to priorities. And it's not like we aren't addressing the homeless problem. We aren't addressing housing. We are. We have created, converted some hotels to allow them to be there. And frankly, it's a whole nother discussion in terms of how we can create affordable housing. I think there are better ways to do it in terms of legislatively locally and removing a lot of the barriers for business, for developers to build true affordable housing, but that's another debate. So there's two million there that we could be using. And lest I upset Councilmember Capriolo, we're building a multi-gen center. That's ten million dollars. I'm not bothered by the seven because that's money that isn't in the general fund. But there's three million dollars from the general fund that is being applied to this multi-gen center. When we've talked about a senior center, and I've promised, and I've witnessed people in this auditorium, seniors, where we've made a motion for a million dollars, then rescinded it to build a senior center that we promised them for years. And we have three million dollars set aside for a multi-gen center that frankly, I'm not sure people really want. I know the seniors don't want it. They want a senior center. And we're taking three million dollars of general fund money, putting it aside for a multi-gen center that I think basically nobody wants and can be used in the parks. That's how I feel about it. That's frankly, five million dollars right there. We could go on to a one point seven million dollars for a mandatory rental inspection program that I think is completely unnecessary, every year operated, one point seven million dollars. So to act like there's no money, that it isn't being wasted, that it isn't being reprioritized for other things that I think belong in parks, is total crap. So we have five million dollars if you want to utilize it, Council President.
Mr. President, if you would allow me, before the vice president speaks, and I'm going to try and stay in my lane, Mr. Vice President. Councilmember Bretterfeld, I like the way you're thinking because you're trying to find ways to pay with what we have. Pay as you go. I appreciate that, and I want us to kind of have that mindset. But I'm not the District Four council member. The vice president's been re-elected to his district. And, you know, I think he would know if people want that multi-gen center. district, and, you know, I, I think he would know if people want that multi-gen center, and that multi-gen center, Mr. Vice President, will be a part of the Parks Department, correct?
Yes.
So, I actually, when I was in college, lived by CW Large Park, it's a nice park, but it's pretty much an empty field, it's green, which is great, but I really trust you after your years of experience, I think you've served longer than any of us have, so I'm going to trust your judgment on this matter, and maybe you want to share with the folks what you've been working on for nine years, and what this multi-generation someone is actually going to do for the community, what kind of asset it's going to be, because, you know, it is about trade-offs, I understand, but if we don't build the multi-gen center, which isn't just for seniors, but for everybody, what are we going to lose?
Thank you. I'm biting my tongue, trying to be the statesman that I try to be every single day while I'm in this office. Stay in your lane was one of my comments, and quite frankly, Gary, you need to stay in your lane. Why would I say that? You have no idea what my district consists of, you have no idea the demographics, the population, the needs, the things I've done over the years. You're way, way out of line. So stay in your lane, that's good. My lane, on the other hand, this has been on the books, I've been working on this for nine years, the one year I was temporarily, and the last seven and a half years. So if you want me to sit down with you and go through the details, and let you know exactly what we're doing and why we're doing it, and exactly how I was able to raise money to pay down the HUD bill that was just addressed, you have no idea about that, I'm sure, but I'm working for everyone in this city, for everyone, and you know why it's called multi-gen? Obvious, multi-generational, every phase of Fresno can enjoy this, from an infant to you, to me, my mother at 93, they are all welcome, that's why it's multi-generational. And by the way, I didn't want to go through this, because you've heard this from me for seven years, I do not have a community center, I do not have a community center in my district, I'm the only one without that. Through the efforts of TJ and Jennifer and the people I see in front of me, city manager, the mayor, we finally reached that point. We're finally going to have an opportunity to provide this service for my constituents in District Four that's long overdue. So I appreciate your concerns and your financial genius, leave my lane alone, unless you know the facts and the figures, and I'll sit down with you carefully going over those. So I appreciate it, I like the idea of trying to figure out the way to end these things, but you can't take something that's on the table, that's been worked on for eight-plus years, it's fully funded, we've got it all laid out, the government has very high marks for this project, and they want a multi-gen, and that's what they're going to get. So I hope you understand what I'm saying, and I apologize if I offended you, but this is so important to 76,000 people in District Four and the entire City of Fresno, it's not just my district, it's open to everyone. My district touches, of course, five, it touches two, it touches every district, really, I'm right in the middle of the whole thing. So I invite everyone to come and enjoy this facility. I've done all the legwork, I won't be here to quote "cut the ribbon," doesn't matter to me, doesn't matter to me. My job is to take care of the people in my district and the City of Fresno, and I've done that, proudly done that, worked my tail off, and there's others. If you wanted me to go through the litany, we could be here for an hour, of the things that are pending right now. The $1.3 million facility over at Sixth and Shaw, we did a walkthrough yesterday, we've got that rolling real well. The splash pad at Fowler and Shields, got the equipment in, that's been on the books for six years. It takes time to do this, but I'm just saying, there's lots going on, and I appreciate what you're doing for your district. My district's totally different.
Thank you, Council Vice President.
I've lived there 44 years, I know my district.
Thank you.
I could go on, but I'll defer to the chair.
Thank you, Council Vice President. You also, I may remind you, you constantly remind us of brevity, so, and you've been brief. Thank you, Council Vice President. Councilmember Brettafeld?
Yeah.
You didn't offend me at all, Council Vice President, and this is my lane, anything that's taxpayer money, that's general fund dollars, is my lane, and so I will be in that lane every single time. I too don't have a community center, just so you'd be clear, you're not the only one that doesn't have one, but I'm not advocating for it, there's no money for it. You don't have the need, sir, apparently, I do. Really? There really isn't a need for a community center in District Six? There is a need for a community center. What are you doing to commit that? There's a need for a community center everywhere. Let's get busy, let's get busy. I'll help you. I'll help you. I didn't interrupt you, I didn't interrupt you. There's a, you made a statement that you're the only one without a community center, that's not accurate, but the bottom line is this, this is my lane, this is the lane of everybody, because we're all responsible for how this money gets spent, and when the Council President makes a motion for $5 million, we ought to figure out where it is, and we ought to really talk about priorities, because we all talk priorities, but we don't really emphasize it. Nobody says that you don't need a community center in your district, I'm not saying you don't, I'm not advocating that you don't, but there's $10 million that's being. Excuse me, Gary, but you just advocated defunding my community center, our community center, the center's community center, what's with it? Please be consistent. There is a senior center that the seniors want, we all know that. The seniors have clearly said over and over, they want their own senior center, they've been very clear about that. So, that's, that's a fact, and that's what they've expressed to me and to other council members. Now, getting back to the point, when you make a motion for $5 million, we have to look at where that money comes from, it doesn't come out of thin air, and as I pointed out very clearly, I think these are misappropriated, it makes sense to commit it to parks, parks is in desperate need, we all talk about the parks, and we have other strategies to deal with parks that we'll be talking about in the future, but it's simple, the money doesn't come from thin air, and money gets spent here that isn't spent in an appropriate way, in my opinion, and that is my lane, and it's going to be my lane until the day I walk out of this building.
Mr. President?
Allow me to try and move the conversation forward, council member. Just a couple of questions that the council member inquired about when it comes to the state resources for purchasing and renovating and housing the homeless in motels. In the state's infinite wisdom, as in the federal government's infinite wisdom, they give us the money to begin the process with the requirement that the city provide the funds to maintain those beds and those housings. So although on paper, it seems like we're getting $10 million from the state, they are requiring that we fund the operation of those facilities for multiple years downstream, and that's where some are CDBG, ESG, housing funds are going to have to be committed to if the city wants to be able to house the additional 1,000 homeless residents we have in the city and remove them from the freeways. As much as I disagree with the federal government and the state government's requirements at times, you know, to have skin in the game, they do set the rules, they have set the rules, you know, it's their money, so they get to determine what those rules are, we have worked through some of those rules under the CARES Act to try and provide relief, as the council member said, to the general public, to try and provide additional public safety resources to police and fire, and to repurpose our parks staff for, you know, to ensure that those parks are sanitized, you know, keep people safe, because we know that they're being used. So I, I don't want to get into a space of taking it from Peter to pay Paul, I do believe fundamentally that the pie is, that the pie is big enough, and that we should not have to fight for crumbs when it comes to some of these areas. So the, to clarify for, for the public and for the council, the multi-gen center was voted and approved on in June, it remains in the budget, it would take five votes to change that investment, and as much of a robust debate as we've seen, I don't see the consensus of five members of this body to de-invest in District Four. So I, I think it's time for us to move on to the next subject, if we have any questions for the Parks Director.
Council President, I just weigh in very briefly.
Councilmember Sparta, you have the floor.
Yeah, I think this whole conversation is very emblematic of, of, you know, this council fighting for scraps, and I, I think, you know, if we work together, we can certainly find solutions, you know, certainly respect, you know, each council member's opinion, and listen to Councilmember Brettafeld express where he, he, in his district, and their values are right, and what they value, and what they would want to see funded and not see funded, I think he has that right, I think all of us have that right. I, you know, on motion day, we're going to ultimately reconcile these different motions, and, you know, we'll all be able to cast our votes, so, you know, I, I don't think we should get too hung up here and get back on track. I, I support having more housing within the city, I support increasing the funds in our Parks Department, as I seconded your motion, so let's, let's move on, and I think, you know, again, throughout this budget process, we'll have those continued opportunities to, you know, lay down our positions and cast the actual votes.
Thank you, council member, Councilmember Carbossi, we will go to you, but let's try and move the.
Right. I actually do have questions for you, TJ. So, and by the way, thanks for being patient, I'm sorry you're standing up there a while. I, I kind of feel like, in a sense, every one of us is making a statement, we're partially right, I feel like we're in a relay race, TJ, but we keep failing to pass the baton to one another, because everyone wants to get to the finish line first, and that's not how you do a relay race, we're really in this whole pandemic budget crisis together. So, a couple of questions. So in your department, we talked about positions, we talked about resources, can you, I've asked the same question from other department directors, can you give me maybe the top three pending most important things you need right now?
In terms of the most important thing, that number one is filling all the vacant positions. I, it would be a struggle to identify one over the other, I'm a parent of two children, I, I can't pick a favorite of those, every single one of these positions are instrumental, or else we wouldn't have them. So, getting those 10 positions in the classifications that are appropriate for our needs is number one priority. After that, it, it, it becomes a question of ongoing costs rather than just a one-time cost of $5 million, I just want to make that very clear, because we have, as, as I've described, so many projects in the queue, there are, you know, put money towards this, build this, new splash pads, things coming all over the place, and it's all great for our community, but we have to have the staff to keep that ongoing maintenance or to staff the amenity. One of the end goals that we have is to have somebody, have our parks staff be a presence in the community, at those community centers, during the hours that they're open, at the parks while they're open, friendly customer service, a presence in our parks that I think will go a long way in starting to shift the culture of helping our community feel safe and comfortable at those green spaces. And as much as, Council President, you, you were indicating on the community service program and the reorganization, there's an equally important equation to that, and that is our parks maintenance. Those positions are just as critical, because our green spaces need to be maintained, there's things that need to be repaired, keeping the fences in a repaired state and operational, parks open on time, and it's, we're geographically spread out, we have a lot of parks, a lot of responsibility, we take pride in, our staff has done an amazing job with the resources they have, and we do rely on the temporary staff, but additional permanent positions, which create, like I said, another element to it, because it's not one-time cost, it's ongoing, but those are things that will help us move forward.
Okay, and that really helps me a lot, and I, I just want to just state that you've gone with me to parks in my district, you know, we had a shooting in one, we've had some issues that have been ongoing, but I understand you are extremely passionate about this issue, we've talked about the issue of people being at the parks to greet residents and make sure they have equipment, and I can actually, it makes me inspired, I really do feel that, and I'm grateful for your devotion to a department that doesn't always get the attention it deserves, and I want to apologize, because yes, we have given a lot of attention to public safety right now, we are in a pandemic, not that, parks are essential, but in a pandemic, we, this city still has a responsibility to provide garbage collection services, we have to deliver clean water to homes, and of course, keeping people safe. It just so happens right now, for a multitude of reasons, as we discussed, we've had to increase the police budget and fire budget because of dangers, from fires to violence, and that violence includes domestic violence that affects families and our children. So on a holistic level, parks are a part of that equation, I don't want you to think that, and hopefully, we'll get this $5 million and we'll invest more in your department, I don't want you or your employees to feel that they don't matter, they are a central part of this city. It's not about how many percent of the budget you have, it's about how much we value and how effective you are to, to reach out to the community, and my community, we appreciate the Parks Department. The last thing I want to say, though, is just for the record, we have not added one police officer to this budget, so even though we're in the pandemic, I don't want anyone to feel like it's unfair, there are no police officers currently added to the budget. Now, I, I do want to ask a question, because we're talking about potentially defunding something in the Parks Department, which I don't want to do, and I'm all for fiscal prudence, and Councilmember Brettafeld is 100% on the right track, and I'm going to be very careful moving forward, but the Council Vice President, when you campaigned for reelection, because keeping campaign promises is really important to me, did you talk about a community center or a multi-gen center when you campaigned and asked people to support you?
Absolutely, it's a huge necessity, and an absence of a community center in our district creates lots of issues for the community, we have no place to meet, confer, make decisions, improve the overall district, so yes, I did, of course.
So, and I'm almost done, Mr. President, so when the people of District Four re-elected you, they did that with the understanding that you were going to fight and advocate and get a community center built?
Absolutely.
So I want to make a motion, because I'm really concerned about the wavering, I want to make a motion not to defund the Parks Department, and for this council to fully support the multi-generational center at CW Large Park, that's my motion.
Councilmember, I don't think the motion's necessary, because the, the project's fully funded.
I feel it's necessary just to get it on the record, I'd like to know how the council feels about it, because I'm really concerned about what I'm hearing today, if the Council Vice President would second me.
I'll second, of course.
Thank you.
All right, well, I'd add to, make sure you write your motion, send it to the appropriate party, so that we're clear on what we're voting. We're going to go to Assistant City Manager Shad for a minute, and then we're going to go out to the public and council. We, several of us have multiple commitments over the lunch period, including some working meetings with the mayor, so I'm going to try and bring this to a close early.
I will try and make it quick, and first, just hard to believe, but agree with many of the comments that council made. On the issue of looking at the master plan and determining how to spend funds, I, I do very much agree with that. I think one of the challenges with doing that, that everybody knows, is that there are so many needs and priorities that it's going to take a lot of work to select which of those priorities are the highest priority. But I would also encourage, if we're going to revisit that master plan and look at how to use funding, and I think you guys know this, we, we need to look at all of the funding sources available, including the general fund, because I, I think there, TJ has found that there is room for improvement on, on how we utilize funding smartly. The example I would give is recently, the multi-gen center and using a Section 108 loan, but newer than that, we resolved some issues with inappropriate funding at JSK Park and Toll House, just simply by moving funding sources around. I think basically, we could get more bang for our buck if we, we look at that holistically. So, Councilmember Chavez's comment is well taken on the master plan, I think, though challenging, we need to look at all those funding sources and see best how to spend them.
Thank you, City Manager, I'm going to now go to the public, thank you, Director, and again, thank you again for having door hats during this pandemic, if there was hazard pay, you would be the first one on the line for it.
Thank you.
Council President, I just wanted to thank TJ and your team, as I said, we met yesterday, we've been meeting often, you and your team and the city manager staff, everyone that's been involved, I can't thank them enough for doing what you do to benefit the citizens, not just the District Board, but the entire city, so thanks for your, your hard, hard work.
Thank you, we have, we have an amazing Parks team, and they've really stepped up to the plate during this pandemic.
Thank you, and please give them our appreciations on our behalf, if they're not paying attention in the council meeting, and let's see how it pans.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to the public now, it looks like there's two members of public wishing to address accounts on the Parks Budget. We will start off with Kyle, you'll have a minute to address the council.
Thank you, Council, I wanted to bring a, a subject that hopefully can bring some capacity to not just looking at CDU resources, but looking at our community resources. Since 2017, we've been working on engaging the community around a plan for the public land owned by the city at Broadway and Elizabeth, we have a great development team led by the Royal Community Development Corporation, it's a nonprofit, we are hoping for the city to give us approval to continue proceeding to pull down funding for construction, with the city committing to maintain the park. We would not need to be on the city's budget until the fiscal year 2023, when the park is complete toward the end of 2022, so ask that you consider that park, over four, 500 neighborhood residents have been involved, we have ordered over 1,300 kids within a half mile of the park, and it would be a really great contributor to the power district, thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. It will be Lisa Flores. Lisa, you can address accounts on the Parks Budget.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that. Yeah, I just want to talk about the dog park at Roding Park. I understand it's still in the budget, but I'm wondering, who do I talk to? How do we get the ball rolling? Where do we pick the site? How do you get the community involved? Any of that. And also too, I have to agree with Mr. Capriolio. A multigenerational center is a very good start. Me going into becoming a senior, I like to see little kids and I like to see other people, and I look forward to that center actually being built and attending and going to it, even though I'm not in his district. And I do look forward to the long-term plan of a senior center as well. But I really would like to talk to somebody about the progress and the timeline for the movement of the dog park. Thank you.
Lisa, you are more than welcome at this center. It'll take about two more years to build, but we've laid the foundation for you and everyone else. So, you are welcome to join us soon, we hope.
Thank you, Lisa. And for the dog park, you can talk, contact our office. To be frank with you, it's probably going to be on top of my list after my responsibilities as Council President this year because it's keeping me quite busy this year. Next person is Ivanka Sanders.
Hello, this is Ivanka Sanders with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. Parks, trails, outdoor spaces have all proven to be a central component for good health, especially during COVID. At the very least, we call on the city to increase, and thank you for the motion, to decrease the general fund allocation for parks and hopefully bring the total general fund allocation for parks up to 10%. This increase will support the need for ongoing maintenance and operations of existing parks, which is in addition to the funding that is being transferred into the Parks Department from the graffiti division. Dedicated investment in parks is needed to address the identified needs in the Parks Master Plan, which include 175 million just to fix the existing parks. It is also not too late to do the right thing and approve the appeal of Measure P, which would bring approximately 35 million annually to our park system, which ranks as one of the worst in the nation. Presidents have relied on accessing parks and other green spaces to maintain their physical and psychological health. Parks strengthen our communities. The city of Fresno has severely underfunded parks for decades. In fact, Fresno spends far less per capita than most other comparable cities. Additionally, it is still not clear to the public which of the motions made in the initial budget hearings of June that will be included in the final fiscal year 21 budget. For example, during yesterday's police budget hearing, Councilmember Sparsa supported using the old Southeast Fresno Police Station as a wellness center for police, yet in June it was motioned to use as the old station as a recreational extension of the Boys and Girls Club. Additionally, we also support the Southeast Fresno Community Economic Development Association's request for the 90,000 from Park Development fee revenues that would help leverage up to 8.5 million from State Proposition 68 grant funds. Please continue the conversations, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker is Kimberly, and then we'll break for lunch. Kimberly, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you. My name is Kimberly McCoy, Project Director of Fresno Building Healthy Communities. I want to thank all the motions that were made today on behalf of the Parks Department. But this conversation wouldn't even be happening right now if it wasn't for the youth in Fresno stepping up, bringing attention to the Parks Master Plan not being updated to where we can get allocated $450,000. So, I just want to give credit where credit is due. Thank you to our youth for raising the awareness around our parks condition and the disinvestment in our parks so we can continue on fighting. The Parks budget grew by nearly 2.5 million this year. The only reason why it was increased was because of the motions that were made to move the graffiti bureau, which was 1.2 million from the Police Department. Without this transfer, the Parks Department would see a minimum increase from the general fund. Parks are the center of our communities, and the city of Fresno has underfunded parks for decades. We must have dedicated investment in parks to address the needs that residents have identified. 52% of registered holders supported Measure P in 2018, which would have invested more than 38 million in our park system. I ask that this council increase funding for parks by 4%, which would bring the total of general fund allocation to 10%. This piecemeal approach that the city is doing every year is not working. It's time to invest in our parks, especially in our parks in South Fresno. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy. With that, Council, we will adjourn the meeting, and we'll see you back at 2 o'clock. Thank you all. Looks like we do, so we'll continue. City Clerk, are we ready, Brianna? All right, the next budget on our infamous budget hearing agenda is our Planning and Development Department Director. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Council President, Members of the City Council, Jennifer Clark, Director of Planning and Development. First slide here, planning and development is divided into task groups which align with their work product or funding source. The Building and Safety and Current Planning divisions provide direct service to the construction and development industries through entitlements, plan review, building permits, and inspections. Parking provides both enforcement activities and management of the city's structured parking and street parking assets. Long-range planning, historic preservation, and economic development lay the foundation for investment in the community. The Federal HUD Division administers state and federal funding for affordable housing and community development activities. And the department is supported by Unified Administration Division, including personnel, technology, and financial services. Next slide, please. The department finances are broken up into general fund and non-general fund activities. This year, the general fund comprises approximately 1/3 of the budget, and special revenues comprise 2/3. This is primarily due to the new state revenues related to affordable housing and special federal appropriations for homeless and community development activities related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Increases in the budget, which are shown on Page B 116 in the budget book, increases include, but council motions 34, 45, and 47, along with CARES reimbursements, MOU and personnel increases, and interdepartmental charges. No new positions have been added. Next slide, actually, and the next slide. One more. Focusing a bit more in-depth in the Building and Safety and Current Planning divisions, the department is projecting an increase in fees for service of approximately 20%. This is due to a dramatic uptick in demand for services by the development industry. As you can see in the first chart, and I apologize it was cut off on the end, the department has seen an increase in average monthly revenues from the mid 700,000s in 2012 to over $1 million per month this year. I say average because you can see there is a definite annual and triennial fluctuation based on the new building code cycle every three years. However, during that time, our rates of activity have also increased dramatically. In 2012, a planner would process an average of 66 entitlements per year. That number is now nearly 300 per planner. Even removing the new zone clearance types of application, planners are still processing over three times the annual number of entitlements while still generally meeting published timelines. On the Building and Safety side, our plan check applications have also increased 20% and inspections by 40% over that same period of time. Our inspectors, who are making an average of 2,700 inspections per year, are now at 3,800 inspections per year per inspector. I can say that the complexity of review has not decreased, but the demand our employees' time has certainly increased exponentially. Unfortunately, with this type of cycle, it coincides with those who compete for the same talent and employees. This includes other cities and the development industry. Of the department vacancies, 16 have a direct and indirect impact on our ability to deliver these services. These are in various stages of hiring, from conversion through offers at this point. Many were in process in March when we stopped making offers in light of uncertainty. We had a number of highly qualified applicants who we hope to attract back now that we are able to fill positions again. Next slide, please. Lastly, the special revenues of the department come from a variety of state and federal grant sources. FY '21 budget presented here represents an increase of nearly $30 million from prior two fiscal years. The majority of this increase is for one-time pandemic responses, but these have longer commitment and expenditure deadlines than the CARES dollars, allowing for strategic response that has long-term benefit to the community. This division is also experiencing demands on its staffing as the consultants have been released per your direction. The positions needed to expend, track, and audit these funds are critical to the success of the programs and the city's ability to receive future funding. Two vacancies are in various stages of recruitment. It is likely that the city will need to consider additional staffing or consulting contracts to ensure successful delivery of the funding. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Council, is there any questions for Director Clark on the planning and development budget?
I'd just like to say that I wanted to express my appreciation as I've done to all those that have been so important to District 4 and our city. And it's been seven and a half years, you haven't been in here quite that long. And you look a lot more fresh than I do after seven and a half years plus-plus. But anyway, you've always responded and come to the rescue and helped. And thank you for that, not just District 4 but the entire city because we talk. So, you and your team, there's always room for improvement, look at us. But you guys have improved and come along quite a ways, and I appreciate it. So, just my gratitude.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Council? Council, Ms. Ryan?
Just have a couple of questions. I know that this topic came up in the previous, or in the morning, when we were talking about parks. The Housing Trust Fund, I want to see in what stage we're at. I know that you guys were working to draw down the dollars from the state of California.
Correct. So, now that the city has funded the Affordable Housing Fund or Housing Trust Fund for the city, we are eligible to apply to the state for a Housing Trust Fund, additional dollars to that fund. We are not eligible for those dollars if we do not have an established trust fund. So, we're in the process of actually doing, establishing the fund so that we can move forward with that activity.
What's the timeframe of that process?
It will take probably another six months to process that, which is perfect timing because the next application cycle will be next summer.
Okay, perfect. Also, just, I know that one of the motions earlier in the year was to do the facade improvement program for small businesses. Do you think that you guys have the capacity to do that? Or should the Economic Development Department, who works directly with the business, would be the better entity to execute the dollars? I don't want the dollars to sit there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Have you guys thought about that?
I would say that is a really great opportunity for us to partner with Economic Development Division. We can help the businesses through the building and planning process. If they identify and get those individuals to the table, we would love to partner with them on that. And I would have no problem with shifting those dollars and those resources specifically to Economic Development.
Okay, so, I know that Councilmember Chavez, you made, I think, the motion, and I supported it. So, if that's okay, maybe just giving direction that we move in that way because Loupe already has the relationships with the businesses. And like you said, your staff could help them as they're going through the planning or permitting process, if anything is needed for the facade improvements.
Absolutely.
Do we need to make a motion or do we have direction?
I don't know. Do we need to?
Do we need to make a motion to clarify that?
Because right now the dollars are housed in planning.
Do you want to make the motion, just to clarify?
Sure. So, I'll make a motion to work with the Economic Development Division and house those dollars there and just work with the Planning Department to get the businesses through any planning or permitting process.
Absolutely, great.
I think those are my, well, actually, the CDBG dollars that the city received for COVID or related to COVID, what is the timeline, just so that the public knows? And how can they participate so that we get their input as to what projects or investments we're going to be making with the CDBG funding available?
Absolutely. So, we have been, our department has been working with the administration to identify specific projects that would be eligible in this activity. We anticipate in the next couple of months, rolling out those recommendations. And then there would be a public process to comment on those. Right now, there is a, it's more of a virtual process. But we've been very successful recently with virtual public meetings as well as pre-taped presentations. We did that over the summer so that people can go back and look at it later. And then we can voice over in various languages, and that was really successful as well. So, we would anticipate being able to revise our annual action plan to add those dollars and those activities late winter, early spring, to be able to start spending those dollars.
So, we're anticipating next year, early spring, to be able to start putting the dollars out the door?
Correct.
Okay. And so, will the buckets be similar to what we've done in the past in terms of what types of projects are eligible? Or are these dollars a little bit more flexible, given that we were given them?
These actually have more, a little more strings, really, because they need to be related to impacts to the community specifically because of COVID or to prevent and prepare for a future similar pandemic. So, for example, health clinics is a really great one that I know that the council has been very interested in identifying locations in underserved neighborhoods to either acquire or rehab or construct a health clinic in a specific area. We do have some time limits on these projects. So, I don't think new construction is a great idea, but there is an opportunity to potentially use these dollars to identify locations to rehab, acquire and rehab facilities for clinics, health clinics in underserved neighborhoods.
And what about other programs? Like, you know, we've invested some dollars to ensure Mobile Hill Project gets out and into the neighborhoods and provides COVID testing and flu shots. Would that be something that this, also, these dollars could help continue to provide?
So, that, yeah, that goes back to that public service versus facility issue. So that, yeah, that goes back to that public service versus facility issue. And so the goal is to utilize these dollars in a more permanent facility rather than in the services that are one-time uses.
Is that what the direction of the dollars are, or is that direction of?
Yeah, so there are some specific types of activities that are public services that are permitted. But it's a much more limited scale. And there's a really great flyer that I can provide to, that the feds did. It's a two-pager on what are eligible types of activities.
Okay. And what I'd like to do, because I know in the past there's been some nonprofits that kind of have complained about not being able to or feeling like they were unable to compete for some of those dollars. Can we start doing some outreach early on, maybe working with our offices so that we're able to get that information to the CBOs that we work with closely, that their missions align with kind of what we're hoping to invest in, in our community?
Absolutely. What I'll do is I'll work with staff to get those lists from your offices, and we'll make sure that they are informed of those opportunities and potentially have a little bit of training on how to do the applications to be more competitive.
Okay. And then the other thing, because I know that you mentioned that you're working with the administration to look at what are some of the projects that you guys want to fund with these dollars? I'd suggest that we have a discussion here publicly about what is it that the council also wants? And hopefully those things are somewhat in alignment. I'd hate for you guys to come up with a plan and then the city council turns the plan upside down. So I think that, you know, working early together on the development of the projects is probably a better idea versus just you guys working on it and then presenting it to us.
Absolutely.
Those are my comments for now. Thank you, Council President.
Council President?
Yes.
City Clerk, can I clarify who seconded the motion?
Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the rest of the council on the planning and development department?
I've got some motions. This is Councilmember Esparza, Wizard of Oz. Got some motions I'd like to drop in the queue here. As everyone knows, planning is critical in our city. And a lot of the issues that we face in District Seven, really, at the root of those issues are a lot of, you know, very poor planning decisions from far, you know, before Jennifer's time. So I want to thank you, Jennifer, for the work you are doing here for the city. And I have three motions I'd like to make. So number one is, in the summer budget, we allocated $100,000 towards the rehabilitation efforts of 4403 East Tillery, which is the Fresno Bidos and Needles Building. The administration was unable to include that allocation in the CDBG efforts. And so I'd like to make a motion to have that $100,000 come from the general fund dollars.
Second.
Towards rehabilitation efforts of 4403 East Tillery. Thank you, Councilmember Arius. That's the first motion. The second motion is related to housing, as we've been discussing today, taking a look at how to increase our housing capacity here in the city. And specifically with my district where we have a lot of mixed-use zonings, I think we could do better in terms of the density. And this would also help the private sector, give them more flexibility in order to have their projects penciled, these different mixed-use zones. And so what I'm going to be looking at is potentially a text amendment or looking at more infill overlay districts in order to accomplish this. What we need, prior to that, or as that's happening, is a focused environmental impact report. And so I'd like to make a motion for $150,000 towards the focused EIR in order to assess the increasing density in all mixed-use zonings. So that includes commercial Main Street, commercial regional, corridor mixed-use, neighborhood mixed-use, regional mixed-use.
I'll second.
All right. And then the last motion, this is, if you follow the General Plan Implementation Review Committee, they've had some fairly lively discussions. And one motion that they had recently, really, I think, is at the heart of what they need in order to actually stop spinning their wheels and be able to make decisions. They need information. And so the information they're looking for can be captured in what they call a comprehensive fiscal impact analysis of development altogether. So I'm going to make a motion for $275,000 for a comprehensive fiscal impact analysis. I can, I can.
I'll second that. Can I clarify? Just a question on that.
Sure.
So for the analysis, would that include ways to be able to fund? Because I know that there are challenges in areas like the areas that I represent. And so this was actually part of my ask when we were going through the annexation process of a couple of projects in my district. And we kind of did a little fiscal analysis. We didn't, you know, probably have the time or all the data that we would have, I think, what this analysis will produce. But will those types of fiscal analysis provide also tools to be able to help?
Councilmember Soria, let me, just for transparency, let me read to you, let me take 30 seconds to read the motion that the General Plan Implementation Review Committee actually passed.
Okay.
So their motion was to conduct a fiscal impact analysis to measure the variable financial sustainability impacts of the general plan, land use, and development policies on general plan implementation. It would include a comparative economic and market analysis of various jurisdictional plan approvals, development policies, public infrastructure, and service platforms. Zoned land capacities, development product types, market demand, and more in the proximate jurisdictions of Fresno. So when we say comprehensive, I mean, they mean very comprehensive. But in terms of actually negotiating the scope, you know, that's something that we certainly, I think, has not necessarily got to be captured here in the allocation of the dollars. But I think the scope, the definition of the scope is going to be very important going forward with this project.
Okay. That works.
All right. You have three motions. They've been seconded. If you can submit those motions to staff, that would be appreciated.
Get those in writing.
Any other questions from the council to the planning director?
I forgot to ask, you mentioned the tremendous amount of increase in building permits and so forth, and the number of inspections. Remind me, have we increased the number of inspectors? Because I know that when I'm out in the community, folks kind of complain that it takes us a long time. And I know partly, you know, we had some, obviously because of COVID, maybe some challenges there. But is there a need, given that we may see some additional revenues, given the fact that there's more permits out there or requests for inspections?
Correct. So we do actually have two positions right now that are vacant, that we are in recruitment or we are pending a list of names. And filling those positions will help. I can tell you that we are not at the point right now where we're having carryover inspections. That means ones that are scheduled for today, that we can't get to today, that carry over to tomorrow. We're not quite at that point yet. But we are significantly above the national norm for inspections per inspector. And so.
What does that mean? What do I mean?
So typically, an inspector should be assigned a certain number of inspections per day. And we're at about double that number of inspections. Now, because of the cyclical nature of the work, you know, there is a need to go back and reevaluate once we fill those two positions, how many potentially we would need. Anytime we increase or decrease the number of positions that we have, that does impact our fees. Because that's how, you know, it is a 99% cost recovery on the building side. So it is really important that we balance that with the cost of those inspection services. So sometimes it's better to carry that over or to handle that with overtime versus adding more inspectors. But I do want to get with the building official to figure out how many and what type. Is it residential? Is it commercial? Is it our specialty inspectors? Where is that additional demand coming from? But yes, it is a significant, we have increased the number of positions in that, in that work unit, almost double since 2012. So we have increased the number of positions.
Yeah, I know that we had previously had this conversation too. And I think at some point, and I don't know if it was for the inspectors, we had said, because, you know, it's cyclical, right? We said if we do need it, we would, I guess, go hire folks?
So our.
Was that for inspectors or for the other?
No, that's actually for a plan review. That's for plan review. And that is our third-party option, which we have not had, needed to exercise yet. Remember, it was like the relief valve. But I know that I am starting to hear from the industry they would like to be able to start exercising the use of that third-party review because we are, we are seeing a significant impact in the number of plan checks per plan checker.
Yeah. Okay. So we're okay right now with inspectors? You think that the volume, even though they're doing double work of the other industry, we're not going to burn them out?
I think, I think that needs to be a separate conversation and to come back with a fee that would go along with that, right? So if we're going to increase the number of inspectors as a part of the budget, we would need to increase fees as well. We just reset our fees. And I want to make sure that the industry would be comfortable with adding additional fees to get that faster service.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right, counsel. I do have a couple of questions, Director. Is the parking department under your purview?
Yes.
In the June budget, the touchless wireless parking meters that they've been working on forever were removed from the budget, given them pending, you know, doom and gloom budget projections. Have those been added back on?
Yes. And those are in the parking division. The, the division is working on implementation of the, of the charging stations, yes.
Okay. And then I have another question for you here. Nope, that was it. I think you've done very well for us. And thank you again for, in my experience, Director, you are the first director that has proactively declined additional liquor stores in already saturated areas without having to wait for the public to, you know, you know, push back and protect their neighborhoods. So thank you for, you know, being thoughtful of the quality of neighborhoods we have.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I just want to say that our team works really, really hard. And I want to thank the staff for everything that they do every day. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you again for the patience you're having with myself, Councilmember Chavez, the stakeholders on the South Industrial work. I know it's been a few months of a lot of meetings and a lot of different versions of reality. And I know it's sometimes tough to keep up with all our changing minds, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Council President, I do have questions.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Director.
No worries.
By the way, I want to thank you, your office, whether it's Mike or Dan, they're, they, Mike's right here. They're very quick to respond. I'm, you know, land use is a big part of our job. And they do a great job of being able to provide background information and help get things moving in District Two. I appreciate that. So we talked earlier about making balanced decisions. We're in a COVID pandemic. You know, the decisions in your department actually have a lot of potential to increase revenue in this city. And there's difficult decisions to make. We have neighborhood standards. We have specific plans. We have state regulations like VMT, which, you know, it is a state regulation. And we have to find a way to adapt to that. I'm trying to understand, and I like the idea of a fiscal impact analysis, but the opportunity costs of not taking action. You know, we don't have enough money for parks. Some people may disagree, but we don't have enough money to hire more police officers, apparently. It affects the entire, the entire city, the quality of life here, especially when we're in a crime wave. But when, when you talk about, let's say, a convenience store at Copper and Maple versus a convenience store in southeast Fresno or southwest Fresno. And I know we have district implementation committees. We have a planning commission, then we have the council. So that layer is a part of the process, right, when we're talking about these issues? So if a neighborhood didn't want a liquor store, they can be heard at these three different levels. Would that be correct?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. My other question is, when we say no to, let's say, a housing project or, well, let me put it this way, the master plan community concept to reduce VMT, lick, live, work, and play in the same area. That means that some places may be by right zoned. Let's say West 99. We have the implementation committee. They came up with a plan of how they want their neighborhood to look like. Or at Copper and Maple, or at, I don't know, Bullard and Marx, or Bullard and West, whatever. They know that this is zoned for commercial, or this is zoned for residential, or this is zoned for light industrial or whatever. But it is by right, correct? Those things can be built by right, based on the zoning, unless there's a rezone.
So the development code is set up with certain approvals that are what is considered ministerial or truly by right. Development permits, which would be the entitlement that you would need to construct something, is actually a discretionary permit because the city can use its discretion in approving or approving with conditions certain development permits. So in the process of approving a master plan or a specific plan, one of the tools and the ones, one of the ways to make it truly by right or ministerial is actually to write that into the plan, which would then take away discretion from the city from adding any additional regulations, like, oh, we want you to do this other traffic signal, or we want you to do this other thing, right? So it would take away our ability to exercise discretion, but it would allow for streamlining of applications. That is correct.
Okay. I appreciate that. What I'm trying to get at is, you know, we talked about the issues we have in our city. We don't have enough money for some very important departments. Yet we talk about relying on a sales tax, which is regressive. It does, it's proven that it typically hurts people with less money. But we don't talk about the fact that we have a revenue problem and being able to bring in revenue to the city. And when we have these policies that are restrictive, not by you, policies that we make that are restrictive, do we calculate the opportunity cost of losing something to another community? Do we calculate the opportunity cost of? It's very easy to be up here and say, no, Amazon, they're terrible, they're evil. But when we don't create those jobs and there aren't people that can afford housing in this, in this community when housing prices are going up because we're not willing to build more, do we talk about that? Do we talk about the impacts of our decisions as a council?
So I would say that the entitlement review or the planning review of most applications is really looking at the land use question. It doesn't typically ask that fiscal question. And I think that's something that this council has been very vocal about wanting to make sure that we were, we are asking the right questions. What is the fiscal impact, both positive and negative, from approving or not approving a particular project? So I think that's something that we need to look at more thoroughly as to how we layer that into our process to give you the tools that you need to make a rezoning decision or a conditional use permit decision that typically we have not provided you with that, with that information. I can tell you that that's not a skill set that a planner typically would have. So it would be something that we would either need to have an on-call consultant or we would need to require that the applicant provide that particular type of review for us.
And I really appreciate that. So you, I mean, your department, you are land use experts. It's understandable. That's your wheelhouse.
Right.
But is it fair to say the decisions we make, if there are unintended consequences, unintended consequences in those decisions that can impact your ability to do your job or your planners' ability to do their jobs?
Sure, sure. So, you know, it's definitely always good to have more information than less information. I don't want to bog down the process with additional requirements for studies that aren't really required or necessary. But if it's something that the council for specific types of projects feels would make a more balanced package for them to review, we definitely want to provide that, that resource.
Okay. I guess that helps me to understand. Then I think the notion I'm getting is, the impacts we make as a body do impact other departments. They do impact the opportunity for more housing, or less housing, or more jobs, or less jobs. And I guess when we pass policies, we need to be very, very careful of what we're actually trying to solve with, with things that are before us, policies we're creating. And then also try and understand what the cost, true cost is to the community, whether it's a good benefit or it ends up being a bad benefit. So you really helped me to see that, and I appreciate that, Director. Thank you very much for answering my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember, for your questions. Director, can you, maybe this is a question for Mike, for Henry. Henry, on page 115 in BS and Boy, Planning and Development Services. the amended budget shows forty-eight million dollars, nine hundred and seventeen thousand. The revised budget shows eighty-one million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand. What is the difference of that, approximately forty million dollars?
Henry can probably address that also, but primarily, we have actually shown the additional federal resources and state resources from the CV, ESG CV one and three, and CDB one and two, and CBG CV one and three have been shown, as well as the specific capital projects that are programmed in and the anticipated special revenue of the one oh eight loan.
Thank you. And can you remind me, I'm trying to find here, you are only requesting in the revised budget one point eight additional positions?
So those are actually a full-time, filling out of positions that were partial positions last year. So they were funded partially last year, so now they're full this year, so it shows up as a net increase in positions.
Thank you. And Director, I do want to commend you again. You have, your department has processed nearly forty million dollars in additional revenue from the federal government during this pandemic without having to add additional staffs. And I'm sure that means some of your folks are working overtime in the weekend, so thank you for that commitment. Counsel, I'm going to go to public comment, if there's no other questions. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the planning department's budget? We have Ivanka, please proceed.
Thank you, this is Ivanka Saunders again with Leadership Council. For the planning department, I just wanted to, again, request for the truck reroute study. We initially had asked for five hundred thousand. The Southwest Pacific Plan calls for completion of a study to reroute large commercial diesel trucks that currently travel through west Fresno neighborhoods. This increased burden of diesel emissions and particulate matter correlates with the poor air quality and detrimental impacts. The Calen Virus Green proves that southwest Fresno and south central Fresno score in the top five percent of the census tax for the worst air quality and poor health outcomes. Southwest, the Southwest Pacific Plan also states that the city aimed to complete the truck reroute study back in two thousand and eighteen. Also, within the Community Emissions Reduction Plan of AB six one seven, a truck reroute study is also required. This is a critical need as the AB six one seven south central Fresno area continues to increase industrial and distribution development while ignoring the overburdened air quality impacts on communities of color. This study, once complete, will help improve the health outcomes of this community. Also, I just wanted to bring to your attention there are state-required climate adaptation and environmental justice plans that must be included in the budget planning. To remain in compliance with the California state law, the city council must ensure that there are adequate dollars allocated for these planning activities, which must undergo a meaningful and responsive public process. Specifically, I'm referring to SB three seven nine, which requires the cities and counties update their general plan safety elements to address climate change impacts and resilient strategies. All localities must have this incorporated into their general plan by January two thousand and twenty-two. Also, SB one thousand requires that upon updates to two or more elements of the general plan, cities and counties must include an environmental justice element in their general plans to ensure that planning addresses the needs of environmental justice communities in the future development. So thank you for taking these two into consideration.
Thank you. Director, before we go to the next speaker, can you confirm that every member of the budget in June had two hundred and fifty thousand towards the truck study?
I would actually defer to Scott Moser, who is on the line, who is on Zoom. The Public Works Department is actually in, working with the Air District right now on that specific issue.
And I spoke, Scott, we will unmute you. I did speak with the Director of the Air District last night, and he gave me the good news that the Air District has authorized up to half a million dollars towards that truck study. So Scott, do we have some funds set aside for the city's portion?
Yes, good afternoon, counsel. Scott Moser, Public Works Department. In our discussions with the Air District and the Community Base Steering Committee and the Truck Rerouting Subcommittee, we have committed staff time to perform the traffic counts required in that area for the study. That's about sixty thousand dollars of a soft match. The city will also gain benefit of that, of updating counts in that area. So we are doing that. Our staff has also put together a draft request for proposals to go out to consultants, and that is before the Truck Rerouting Subcommittee for their review and input.
Mr. Moser, do you feel confident that we have sufficient resources with the contribution of the Air District of up to half a million to complete that study? And the city's in kind?
Yes, counsel, President, I do feel that we have the resources available, and we're very eager to get underway with that. Briefly, I wanted to mention next steps. One is the Subcommittee and the Community Steering Committee to approve that, and then our staff, in conjunction with the Air District, would put together a funding agreement, a cooperative agreement, and bring that before the council for consideration and approval.
Thank you, Mr. Moser, for saving me one more motion this afternoon. Now we'll return to the rest of the public comment. Who's next, Brianna? Lisa Flores, you are up next.
Good afternoon, McElhanes City Council. First off, I would really like to see you fund the environmental justice portion of your general plan. When is it coming out? Because I've been waiting to look at it. Second, parking department. I have been asking for years for a copy of the parking plan for Roding Park. It was supposed to come out when the zoo expanded. Nobody seems to know where it's at, so I'm asking you guys in the planning department, where is it? Because your contractor for parking doesn't know where it's at. Third, you're spending money on all these plans. It looks like basically four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, hundred thousand dollars or whatever, four hundred and twenty-five K. I'm wondering, would these focus DIRs be better suited to amend your general plan and actually make your general plan stronger and correct versus doing these independent layering plans out there? Because it kind of gets hard when you start to look at something. There's so many plans that overlay on something, and doing more streamlined planning and actually making your general plan stronger versus the weakest document I've ever seen. And fourth, I'm on the truck, I'm on the AB six one seven committee, and I'm really looking forward to doing and seeing the forty-three-page document that I just got last, the other night, for the RFP for the truck study. So I want to thank Scott and the staff for being very open and listening to what the community wants and responding in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. And just so you know, we're in the process of redesigning the parking out at Roding Park with some touchless parking meters, so our office will be happy to send you a copy of that plan when it's complete. With that, counsel, it looks like we have no more public comments on this budget. We'll move on to the next budget, the General City Purpose Department. You are up next. Who's presenting, city manager?
Hello, Council President, Henry Fero, Budget Manager.
Henry, are they making you work from home so that we don't ask you a lot of tough questions in person?
No, but I am required to be at home, unfortunately.
Okay, well, stay safe, and you have the floor.
So in front of you, you'll see an overview of, well, actually, it should be the General City Purpose Department, is that correct?
Correct, Henry.
So allow us to, there we go. So this presentation will cover the General City Purpose Department. Overall, the revised twenty-one budget totals fifty-three million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred, and that is all funds combined. In the department, there's also a total authorized position of seventeen. It should be noted that those positions correspond to the retirement office, which is an internal service fund. Now, the primary responsibilities within this department, one of its main functions is it acts as the city's depository for taxes and fees associated with the general fund. Big examples would be, for example, the sales and property taxes, as well as business license and franchise fees. In addition, the department oversees expenditures that are citywide or interdepartmental in nature, such as election costs, service agreements, such as the SPCA, the Economic Development Corporation, as well as lobbyist services. Another responsibility is we have appropriations to disperse funding for a couple of the programs under the CARES program, and I'll identify those in the following slides. Another responsibility is that, again, it includes the retirement office. It is an internal service. They provide our city members, along with the city, with flexible, cost-effective, participant-oriented benefits through their rigorous, prudent investment management policies. And then lastly, the department oversees debt service payments that are not specific to one department, but apply citywide in general. We could move to the next slide, please. So this slide is going to give you an overview of the operating general fund budget. So in this case, for FY twenty-one, there is an overall budget of eleven million, one forty-one, six hundred. If I look at the main categories of personnel, non-personnel, and internal services, there have been some activities that you'll see differences compared to the FY twenty amended budget. For personnel, two main activities that's driving the million-dollar reduction is in FY twenty, we did budget for seven hundred and fifty thousand in a comp and class for bargaining units, FCEA and FPEA. However, in twenty-one, that amount did not roll over. Under the non-personnel, you'll see that it's down by four point six million. A big portion of that reduction relates to the CARES reimbursement that was established in FY twenty, and there were two main programs. One was for a million, twelve nine hundred, and that was the emergency homeless funding. It was the Forty-Eighth Amendment. The dispersment of that took place, so there was no need to roll that forward. There was also a hundred and ten thousand for EDC consultation services, along with two million for the Save Mall Business Program. Now, there have been some remaining balances, however, those have been accounted for. But again, the bulk of this reduction in non-personnel relates to, again, AARs, CAREs, that we posted late in FY twenty, and only one really got processed. And then lastly, we do, we did have some, what I call, one-time non-CAREs-related AARs that were budgeted in FY twenty but did not roll forward. For example, there was half a million for the Cesar Chavez Foundation and two hundred and fifty thousand's census outreach. The last category of internal service, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred reduction, primarily reduced charges related to IT, facilities management, city hall, and a little bit of the capital overhead that applies to, again, work that comes up. We tried to plan for it, and in twenty, if that amount was not rolled forward. Now, the section on the bottom part of the screen is operating special revenue funds. Bulk of these items will relate to, like, grants, items that are passed through from this department and out towards a service. For example, you'll see this, there's a heat fund, that's a grant. That's down by two point eight million. Well, what's happened is that that fund is reaching its sunset, so what has been budgeted is the remaining portion that's available for spending on that fund. The one below it, the HHAP state grant, that was established in twenty, and again, it's a timing so where I've appropriated them in FY twenty-one to be utilized. There are a couple others. The one I also want to point out is, and there's been discussion about the economic development infrastructure. That one relates to the McKinley Blackstone Project. So there is six hundred in the general fund available, along with five hundred thousand in this economic development infrastructure. From what I've read through the agreement is the six hundred thousand that's in the general fund would be a loan to be paid back. However, the economic development infrastructure, half a million, is a contribution by the city. Last item on the special revenues you'll see is economic incentives. I've appropriated two point three million, and that relates to our agreements with Ulta, Amazon, and the Gap. I've appropriated at that level in case there are rebates that are required. I call it, as if you will, a catch-up. But just note that whatever is not spent in these appropriations will then be carried forward in this specific special revenue fund in FY twenty-two. It's only meant to be utilized for these programs. So if we can then move on to the next slide, please. At the top of the screen, you'll see the operating internal service fund. This is the retirement office, and they are budgeted at two million, three eighty-one, two hundred. Their budget does include two new positions that were approved by council, be it the first PAR amendment for an assistant retirement administrative person, along with, per the fourth PAR amendment, a retirement accountant manager. The increase also captures the contractual increases for MOU obligations, as well as health and welfare and pension costs. A minor increase within that budget is, within the internal services, you'll see sixty-eight thousand increase, and that relates to projected telephone and IT service costs going up. Now, towards the bottom of the screen, you'll now see operating internal service fund. This one is specifically related to what we have as an employee termination payout fund. We utilize that as employees leave the city, and they have eligible, if you will, fringe balances that the city owes them. We then pay this out through this fund. So if it's unspent, any of these appropriations, it is then carried forward, in this case into FY twenty-two, and will help lower charges that we would recover from the departments.
Henry, what was the actual amount for the last fiscal, the last two fiscal years?
In front of me, I just have FY twenty, and you'll see that it was two point two million. For FY nineteen, I'd have to go back and find that number.
What, under what, what line item would it be? Is it just contingency? Where I can find it? Because I have my budget book from last, the last fiscal year.
Are you looking at the line item detail?
No.
Or the main book?
The main book. The main book.
Because I think it'd probably be more uh visible looking at the line item detail. It um, it's under the General City Department. It's it's a fund that starts with number five. What I don't know is is the full number to to reference you to.
I am looking.
But if you'd like, I can, I can look that up and provide that number for you for FY nineteen.
Yes, please.
Okay, let me do that. Okay, if we could then move on to the next slide. So the last portion, again, of the primary responsibilities of this department relate to then covering uh the debt service payments that are not specific to a department. You'll see there's basically four main debt service categories. The first one is our pension obligation bond. Um, that is s- uh scheduled to end in twenty twenty-nine. We also have another debt service payment for, it's the uh City Hall, E-Building, and Granite Park. That looks to end, or it's scheduled to end, I should say, in FY twenty-one. Then we also have two additional debt service uh payments. One's related to a lease revenue bond series twenty oh four, and that uh encompasses various parking facilities. This debt service is scheduled to end in twenty thirty-five. And then the last debt service um you'll see is the two million, nine sixty-five. That relates to the uh No Neighborhoods Left Behind program, and that is scheduled to end twenty twenty-three. Counsel, that completes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you have.
Counsel, we'd like to proceed with questions. Who wants to go first?
I just have a question on the economic incentive line item.
Sure.
For this year. I know that in the previous uh budget, we had allocated three, I think, three mil, three, almost three point two.
Correct.
And then we revised the budget. What was the actual amount that we expended?
For, for example, if if we if we can look back at that uh s- uh part or summary, in FY twenty-twenty, there was a total of seven hundred and fifty-five thousand. Uh, it would be the page before this that you're seeing.
But then this year.
So for FY twen- for FY twenty, we actually paid out a rebate of seven hundred and fifty-five thousand. Right there. There we go. The bottom part of your screen.
And we're allocating again another three million?
Uh, basically, no, we're, for FY twenty-one, it's the two million, two seventy-eight, seven hundred.
And how are you sure that we're going to get to that? And if.
To be honest with you, uh, Councilmember Soria, I don't know if we will. What what I've done, though, is I've established appropriations so that um I feel that um it's going to ramp up as this process moves forward, and I just want to make sure that within this specific fund for economic incentives, that there is enough appropriations to to handle if we do see a ramp up. But I I don't know that for a fact that that's going to happen.
A ramp up would, for me, doubling up would be more than sufficient, but you're more than, you're almost like tripling up. And if we look at the, at the rate, two years ago, it was three hundred and thirty-five thousand. This past year, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, so I don't know if the, your projections are, they're pretty off. And so I don't, I don't know, I don't know if I'm comfortable enough setting that much money when you're hearing on this council that there are needs across the city that we need to address. So I don't want, I I get it how you say the money will then be rolled over, but um people can't wait, you know, one more year for some of these things that we're asking for. So.
I I would al- if I'm, if I may, I I would also just um note, though, that the funding source for for the two point three million for this fund, it comes from potentially any new sales uh or property taxes that have been generated. And then once uh the respective company submits a request for rebates, it is coming from those those new uh taxes. So if they don't generate these additional taxes, then then potentially then they wouldn't request a reimbursement or a rebate.
I understand that, but there's, your current logic to appropriate that much money into this fund or this line item seem, doesn't seem very logical to me, because if we look at how the number has changed, three hundred and fif- three hundred and thirty-five thousand the first year, seven hundred and fifty last year, so it's doubled up. So what I would say, let's just double it and free up the rest of the money. That's all I'm saying. It just doesn't seem like, it seems like our projections are still pretty off.
No, uh, you made, you raised a great uh comment, Councilmember Soria. Um, it is a projection.
Yeah, so.
I I believe it's all contractually obligated, though. Doug um or Mike Lima, is that accurate?
Contractually obliga-? If if the sales don't happen, we don't have, if the sales happen, we have to reimburse them. I I get that, but there's no set amount until they ask us for reimbursement, right? And what this budget is doing is setting aside money to be able to meet those obligations that we may have. However, my my argument is that the last two years, it has demonstrated we've we've put about three million dollars each time. We we've never even reached to the three million level. We have just gone to the seven hundred and fifty thousand level. So my whole thing, we're hearing the discussion up here about all these different motions, so I just want to point out that there is an opportunity to have some flexibility on the dollars because of where these dollars are coming from. That that's my point.
Counsel, I think I would characterize that as a contingent liability at this point.
So I, if if a motion needs to be made, I would just motion that um that we set double of what we reimbursed last last fiscal year and then free up the the additional dollars. Um, Councilmember Arias, if you could second that for me.
Can you repeat your motion for the record? Just a motion.
My motion would be that the line item for the refunds and claims of economic incentives would only be um one point five, and then we free up the remainder of it.
Second. Any other questions, councilwoman?
Um, those are all the questions I have at the moment.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, I do have some questions, Henry. Henry, is this the budget where um we're supposed to be informed about all the increase in the pension cost?
The the pension cost is um across departments. So each department will have a respective pension cost associated with their their employees.
Understood, but this, but this department is the one that has a retirement office, correct?
It does, who who oversees, if you will.
Correct.
The activities.
And we were promised earlier in the budget hearings that the retirement office would come and explain to us why we're substantially increasing our contribution to the pension fund.
They're going to be here tomorrow, too.
Perfect.
They have a retirement board meeting right now going on.
City manager, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that, and I will save my questions for then. Any other questions from the councils before I go to the public? Seeing none, I'll go to the public for public comment on this budget. Any members of public? Seeing none, we will move on to the next budget. I think we're on to the last budget of the day, counsel. Um, city manager, I believe that is your budget or the budget under your direct purview, so we will hand you the floor.
Wonderful. We're going to have Henry present the overview for us, please.
Henry, you have the floor.
Thank you. So in front of you now is the PowerPoint presentation for the office of the mayor and the city manager. What you'll see is for the FY twenty-one revised budget, in total, it is set at five million, seventeen thousand, eight hundred, with a total I, total authorized positions of thirty positions. Primary responsibilities, carrying out policy directives for the city, for the office of the mayor and city manager, along with the city council departments. Oversight and direction for city departments in day-to-day activities and operations. Proper efficient administration of all city affairs, promoting economic development and prosperity within the city through job creation, improving public safety, and making Fresno a safer and stronger community, restoring existing neighborhoods and improving the quality of life, also to establish long-term fiscal policy that continues to reduce debt, balances the budget, and builds a reserve fund. Also dedicates to funding and improving core services. And lastly, commitment to work collaboratively and transparently to ensure the city grows and advances. We can move to the next slide, please. So in front of you, you'll see now the operating general fund budget that funds this department. It's, again, five million, seventeen thousand, eight hundred. The three main components, if you will, personnel, non-personnel, internal services. So if we start with the personnel, you'll see that it is increasing by three hundred and three thousand, eight hundred. And this is primarily due to a motion that was made in June to now um split council support staffing costs. And then in addition to that, there are two funded cannabis positions. Along with that, there is increases programmed, along with other departments, for health and welfare increases, um, as well as the pension increase at one point nine two percent. The non-personnel line item, you'll see, is growing at a hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred. And in essence, it really is, if you compare it um to the adopted, it's really growing only about uh twenty-three hundred. But we had to um reallocate during FY twenty in order to to fund um some PERS and, again, ID charges related to the cannabis positions, but in FY twenty-one, the two positions are ma- are fully funded. And then lastly, on the internal service, you'll see that it is growing by about ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred, and there are main categories of required IT services, um worth about twenty-eight thousand, and then another fifty-two thousand increase is related to our security assessment charges. So, again, authorized positions are at thirty. Um, that completes this presentation and available for any questions. Thank you.
Henry, before I go to the council, is there any increase in positions in city managers' proposed budget?
Council president, there are no increases in position count.
How many vacant positions are available?
Currently, one, and that is an admin clerk two position that would assist the, i- i- it's related to the cannabis program, who would assist the project manager. I can tell you also that the recruitment for filling that position is taking place at this time.
Henry, um, I've been hearing the whispers about a incoming deputy mayor. Does such a position exist in the budget, or?
It does not.
Does it?
And I'm sorry, council president, could you repeat the the position again?
Deputy mayor?
It is not in the FY twenty-one revised budget.
Does it exist in the system, or would that have to be created? Anybody? Can we have someone in the record?
We checked. There is no actual position called deputy mayor in the salary resolution.
Got it. But technically, I can um give Member Bredfield the mayor, the the title of deputy mayor, right?
Somebody could be hired under a different title under the salary resolution and then have a working title of that.
Oh, okay.
Kind of like public safety director?
I remember that robust debate. Or the.
Does that mean that they can't print their business cards in the city of Fresno? They'll have to get them outside?
Now that you all ever see the print shop, you you'll be making that call, apparently.
Maybe we can create a a title about um authoritative council president for the incoming chair.
Council president, Arias?
Yes, uh, Henry.
I also, I need to add that there is a second uh vacant position in, or in this case, it's in the city manager's office, and that is for an assistant city manager.
That was Jane's position that was vacated in August. And then, um, Henry, there's also um the position under Tim Mormon, the the deputy um chief of staff. I'm looking at the most recent report. I believe it's a council assistant.
You are correct, Wilma.
Yeah, and her working title, Ginger's working title was deputy um chief of staff. So we have three. In full transparency.
Thank you.
I don't want to hide vacant positions.
Thank you.
Okay.
Does not hide anything under the mattress, because we're going to shake down all the sheets and socks and every pillowcase that Councilman Bredfield has been hiding for years. We're going to find. Any other questions for the uh this department budget before I go to the public?
Does this department still have the fifty thousand dollars that you guys had requested the previous year for outside legal counsel?
Henry, is that in our budget or GCP?
No, that was one time. That did not roll over.
Okay, so it's not included in this budget?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, counsel, we don't have any other questions. I'm going to go to the public on this budget. Anybody in the public wishing to ask questions on this budget or provide comments? Seeing none, counsel, this adjourns.
Oh, no, I have.
You guys are.
Me, council president. I just wanted to um put a few motions on the table um for consideration um before the final approval of this year's fiscal twenty twenty-one budget. So my first mo- motion would be to convert a admin captain to an admin battalion chief for the fire department.
Second.
And these conversations kind of happened yesterday um in terms of the needs. The second motion um would be that I do want a motion to add one accountant auditor, um again, for the fire department, as we heard the needs of our chief.
Second.
And then lastly, add one GIS specialist for the department, fire department as well.
Second. All right, counsel.
All right.
Looks like that concludes our budget hearing for the today at three sixteen PM. We will see you back for tomorrow's council meeting. Um, as a reminder, counsel, we start at nine o'clock tomorrow, and we'll begin after roll call in closed session, and then we'll proceed to public session.